Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start our meeting and we'll call for public comments in just a few minutes.
Okay, let's call the San Juan County Planning Commission meeting to order. Uh, for March the thirteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Um. Planning Commission and attendance, Cody Nielsen, Melissa Riggs. Shay Walker, Casey Garcia, Trent Schaefer, I think, Anne Austin.
muted on your side.
And Lloyd Wilson are online. Staff, Kristen Bushnell, Mac McDonald, Jen Nielsen, Craig Halls. Commissioner Stubbs, back there somewhere. Anybody else, anybody else you miss? Okay.
Did you get me, Trent?
Who?
We've got you, Lloyd.
How could I not?
I know, right? Hey, Trent, we can't see anybody but Kristen on the video.
Ew. You're just gonna have to do, I don't know.
All right, we'll look at you, that's fine.
Okay, I'll try to figure it out. I'll let Mac try to figure it out.
Did you hear that? Think you ought to leave it, myself. Okay. Minutes.
Pledge of allegiance.
Oh, it's not only.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mine doesn't, well, I'm on the county webpage. Okay, everybody had a chance to certainly have time to read the January ninth, twenty twenty-five minutes. Any additions or corrections?
I, I have one correction, but I don't know that Anne is around. I thought I, for the, the vote, I thought I made the motion. Then Anne made the counter motion, nobody seconded her, and then we had a vote on my motion to, to approve the. The land use, that's not what the minutes say, the minutes say she made a motion to postpone first.
I think she did make a motion.
Yeah, but it was in the middle, it was after I made my motion.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure that.
Not that it matters.
I'll look at that because it, it probably shouldn't have been made when we already had a motion on the table. So I'll just note that in the meeting minutes.
Yeah, she made it as a counter motion, I remember her saying counter motion.
Yeah, I made a counter motion, isn't that, isn't that legal?
I don't know, we'll look into it on the inside. At any rate, it didn't pass at the end of the day, so.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move this, we approved the minutes as, as, corrected, thank you.
Got a motion. And a second. Any further discussion? A little favor, say aye.
Aye.
Lloyd?
Aye, sorry.
Uh, motion carries. Okay.
I have, I have a question. The, the agenda you're using is different from the agenda that was.
Yeah, my agenda looks very different, so I'm gonna pull up the agenda I sent you all. Um, because that's just. I don't know when it got changed or how, but that's not what I originally sent.
Gotta do the conflict of interest.
That's next. Okay.
Is that what you guys are seeing? This is what we're telling you.
Now that, that's what I got, what's showing now is what I got.
Okay. Okay. Conflict of interest disclosure, this is for anything that's on the agenda, uh, speak now. Uh, I have a conflict on number five. Anybody else? No, sir? Okay. All right, we've done the minutes. Okay, public comment, that's for anything that's on or not on the agenda. Once we move to the administrative items, legislative items, maybe no public comment. So come up, state your name, where you're from, and you'll be given three minutes to speak on it, okay?
Hello, Annette Myers, LaSalle, and you want me to state my purpose?
No, just talk away.
Okay, so I was advised to come tonight, um, as there's rezoning going on throughout LaSalle. And my property is right on Highway forty-six or SR forty-six. And I just am asking that my property not be rezoned since most of it is agriculture. And the parcel that has my home is rather small. And being senior citizen on social security, any increase if it's resulting in a rezone would have a negative impact on me financially.
Could you send the legal description for that lot to Kristen?
Okay, and would that be email to you? Okay, so I can just email that to you, okay? And that's all I'm asking, so thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Thank you.
My name's Cassie Rose, I'm from Blanding, Utah, I'm actually coming to talk about item number five that's on the agenda. So solar panels are not agriculture and all of this, a hundred, all of the hundred, or seventeen hundred and twenty acres has been in green belt. Paying almost nothing in taxes. And on one of the pages, I don't remember which one, on that two hundred and two pages. Those five partials is thirty-five twenty-four, thirty-five dollars, twenty-four cents, two hundred and seventy dollars, fourteen cents. Eighty-three dollars and seven cents, forty-four dollars, eighty-four cents, fifteen eighty-five, total of four hundred, about four hundred and fifty dollars, guys. So, um, to be in green belt status, you have to follow the Farm Act assessment. I tried calling the assessor's office today and couldn't get a hold of anybody, left messages, no callback. So I took it, called the state property tax on the Utah Gov, no callback from them either, so I went on and got my own research. Uh, the Utah Farm Law Assessment Act, the FFA also called the Green Belt Act allows qualified agriculture property to be assessed and taxed upon. The productive capability instead of the prevailing market value. This unique method is an assessment, is virtual to the agriculture operations and is closely proximity of expanding urban areas while taxing agriculture properties. At the market value, wait, while taxing agriculture properties at market value could make farming operations economically prohibitive. So I actually printed all this off for you guys too. Um, on the use chart, right from the chart, Farm Law Assessment Chart directly. The three things that are permissible activities are crops, grazing, and livestock. And so with this application of this conditional use, I believe that. The San Juan County Assessor's Office, and I think Kristen's office probably ought to look into this, uh, cause I don't know how it all signs off. But with, just with this application being put through, it should go back to the rollback of the profit fair market value instead of green belt status. There is a number of properties east of Monticello, particularly the flat areas, that people are triple, well, double, triple dipping in. And I'll explain that in a second.
Lost sound, can't hear anybody.
Cause I personally have tried to lease property for agriculture purposes. And they can't do anything because they have a solar contract and they're not allowed to do anything on it. And I can't even graze it, but they have a solar contract, but they have it in green belt. So there's a lot of money that is being lost and we wonder why San Juan County is so broke. Because not only do we have people using the CRP money for agriculture, you have people doing the contracts. For solar panels, that they're not allowed to do it, and they get the benefit of green belt. Those are my comments. And I will pass out. To you guys. The frequently asked questions on the property tax.
Thank you. Gracias.
Evan Rose from Blanding. Cassie covered most of it, but anyway, I guess to, um, kind of put it more into our perspective. I have talked to dozens of landowners out here trying to lease and grow our operation as we are a ranch enterprise. And, um, I get the same thing from all the property owners that they, um. You know, so they, they sign these contracts and they all say that they stayed in there, that they're not allowed to farm it, they're not allowed to graze it. That they are, you know, they can't, uh, lease it out for, um, you know, any of those activities, so. Under that, that's where we're coming from is, um, that we think that these lands, if they are going to do them. And, uh, the solar, you know, they're not really farms, everybody calls them solar farms, but they're more like. Solar generating stations, they're industrial, so we feel that these lands should be go. Put into, you know, industrial zoning to be able to be done. And, um, the thing that Cassie was talking about with CRP. CRP is a, a program that you can do through the government, through the Farm Service Agency. And you sign it up to grow grass. And your CRP based, uh, payment is based off of how well your grass is and how much sagebrush there is. Um, and things like that, so the government's paying you not to farm it, but you also are not allowed to do anything that disturbs that ground. If you, you know, go in and work it up, you've lost it, and then if you've breached that contract. Then you have to pay the government back all the money that you've ever been paid on, so. It goes into, you know, a lot of detail there, so we're asking that you guys do your, do your homework, um. Because there is a lot of stuff here and, um, you know, and some of the parcels in this, we've. Talked to landowners as well and they've all told us the same thing, you know, that we have stated. The other thing I want to bring up is with this twenty twenty-five proposed, um, planning and zoning. I've brought up in the Blanding meeting that, um, you know, for ag buildings and things that they're, um. Need to be exempt, which they are in the twenty-eleven, I cannot find it in this new ordinance. Um, so if it's not in there, then ag buildings will have to go through the, um, you know, the, the permittee process, will have to go by the. Dollar seventy-five per square foot. And if you add that up, like the hay barn that we're planning on doing is, um, sixty by a hundred, well, that's six thousand square feet, that would cost. Make the cost of the barn ten thousand five hundred just for the permit. So anyway, what I'm saying is, we would like to see that ag building exemption put in.
It's in the International Building Code.
It's already, I think that one's already addressed.
Okay, well, it was in the twenty-eleven, like, stated straight in there, we'd like to see it stated straight in the twenty twenty-five.
It's, it's in the IBC. Next.
Mister, Mister Chairman, this, this Craig Halls.
Go ahead.
Uh, listen, every, um, we're, we're getting all our microphone through, um. Through one microphone here, we don't know who's speaking, could they introduce themselves before they get ready to talk, so we know who is talking? We're getting everything through Kristen Bushnell's mic, that's what, that's the only one that shows up as being talking.
Not for the public comment? Oh, he can't hear me?
Have you heard the public comments, Craig?
Yes, we have heard the public comments, but the only.
So all the microphones are hooked up under my name, but there's actually seven microphones going.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is, if the people, if the person could introduce themselves when they get ready to speak, so we know who's talking.
Okay, I believe they have so far, but we'll make sure that happens, it keeps happening.
Okay.
Marjorie Storland, old LaSalle, Marjorie Hahn is my pen name. Um, I am part of a little working group that, that you guys are aware of. Shannon Brooks, who is a professor and, um, has run. Monticello College and now has the American Legacy Studies, close, close to here up on the mountain. Decided to kind of help control some of the, the bad will that was coming at you guys. Through a liaison group, and that's what we are, I just want to let you know that we do appreciate you. And that we value your work and we value your, your important role, we value the sacrifice and the hours that you put in. The little group that we have is, it's just a small group of people, there's a, um, just a handful of people that are in alter that. Some of us are here tonight. Uh, what we are doing is getting input from the public in a very non-adversarial way. To bring ideas to you. And what we have found is that when people move to San Juan County or stay in San Juan County, they're building a dream. And they, they want to live their American dream, they want to live their San Juan County dream. And we are hoping that we can work in an atmosphere where those dreams become possible. And where more people can join in fulfilling those dreams, we don't come here. To make a little money and leave, we come here to make a life and stay. I, I apologize for my, my voice, I have a voice disorder and I've been working outside all day and, uh, I'm, I'm a little bit of a mess. But we did send you, um, some material, part of it was the feedback from citizens, have you received those? Okay, please take those very seriously, we've, we've, we've personally gone to a lot of sacrifice of time and effort. To talk to people and to hear them in an unbiased way to get their feedback and, and some of it is surprising and some of it is not. So we hope that you will look at those comments and, and be a willing partner as we, as we try to make San Juan County a place where dreams can be realized. Thank you.
Anybody else in house?
Okay, we'll move to online, Landon Thomas, oh, sorry, hold on, we got one more in house.
My name's Mark Weigant, I live out north, you just say San Juan County or you want the actual address?
No.
Up north.
I don't know.
Did you say White Hat?
Huh?
What's your last name?
Weigant.
Weigant.
Yep.
Okay, I'll try to spell.
I'll talk about number five, um, I'm not a rancher, don't know what's going on, don't understand, not gonna pretend to, but I only have a couple hundred acres. But this is America, and if people start screwing with Trent's stuff, are they gonna start screwing with my stuff? I said, I don't know what it's like to be you guys and I feel for you, but at the same time too, it's his land, just like it's your land, wherever you live. Why do you want people thinking they can tell you what to do with it? Do you have the right, do I have the right to come to anybody else's house and say, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that, whether you like it or not? I understand there's like some kind of money thing, but if you think for one minute this guy's here to screw anybody over, y'all can leave. I will, I will say things you won't want to hear. But I'd be the first one to pull a mountain tar feather him if I thought he was ripping us off, and that's not a joke. I just think, like, I don't know, I just got questions, anyway, have a great day.
Thanks, Mark.
Okay, now we'll head to online, and I have Landon Thomas, your hand is up first, go ahead.
Okay, so it's actually Guy and Connie Thomas, that's my son, we got in under him somehow, so anyway.
Can you say that one more time, Connie and who?
Guy.
Guy Thomas.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
So we are part of two and a half acres between the Valley East subdivision that Dana Farmer will be presenting tonight. And Spildman's property. Um, we, our concerns are, um, on what Dana is presenting, and we, I've talked to Dana, so we're, we're clear on this. It says abandoned easement, uh, on the easement between, from the Valley East subdivision into our property. We just want to make sure that it's on record, we have easement there and we don't have to come back to the county later to try and secure easement. Um, he's like, we're kind of abandoning the existing easement, but going to work it out later with him on how we'll enter the properties. Um, based on, on approval between the two, I, agreement between the two of us. But I'd like it on record that, yeah, there is an easement there and we don't have to come back and get it reapproved. Also, um, we are in a sea of overnight rentals. One little two and a half acre parcel between, uh, Valley Estates subdivision that's approved for that and Spildman that's approved for that. We would like to also be approved for that, where we're just two and a half acres in the middle of all that. Um, so I didn't know if we, I need to request that now or, or what, but, so those are our two points and concerns, thank you.
Connie, if you would just send me your parcel number in writing and just say would like to request the overnight rentals is added to our uses.
However.
Okay, sending that to Kristen.
We'll see what we can do.
They're not a, an existing use.
It's not right now.
No.
Okay, yes, I will do that, Kristen, thank you.
We'll get you on our radar and see, see what happens, um, is there anybody else online who would like to comment?
Knock that L up in the corner, make sure he doesn't.
Okay. Well, then.
Okay, any other in-house public comment, we'll move on. Okay, number two, Kristen, you want to tee that up?
So, uh, just due to kind of our, our hustle in January and then the meeting getting canceled in February. Due to weather, we are now just barely, um, getting the appointment of the chair for twenty twenty-five here. Um, also, there's two terms that are going to expire at the end of this year. Um, and that will be Melissa Riggs representing the Bluff area and Lloyd Wilson representing the Special Service District, um. I don't know, that was a little typo in there, so those, those two, um. If you live in those areas or represent the Special Service District, you're open to come join our team, it's a rough ride. Um, a call will be, for interest will be posted in October and we'll sort through those in November and then. That assignment will be done in December and effective starting our January twenty twenty-six meeting. Um, it's a four-year commitment, and so please share with whoever may be interested.
One, one meeting a month.
One meeting a month, is what we're doing now.
At least.
Um, we also, before we dive into electing the new chair, we wanted to review the bylaws. Um, there was one unresolved suggestion from last year, I think everything else we, we did fix, okay, Melissa's saying no. But the planning packet, um, we wanted to make sure it's in writing that it's out three days ahead of the meeting date. And Melissa, what else do you have?
Well, there's a whole bunch of stuff, and I think Kristen, it was before you came on, and, and we spent a meeting talking about it, and I don't think we need to rehash it. If, if you can go back and look at, you know, I just joined in October of twenty twenty-three, so, and you started.
I was on and I took, I looked at those meeting minutes and we've, I believe we've addressed everything, cause we had the conflict of interest.
Well, the conflict of interest that you sent out in this packet still says that you recuse yourself from avail, a vote. In this.
Oh, in, within, so it's not just declaring conflict of interest, it's how it's written?
We had a whole slew of things that we talked about.
Can we pull those minutes back? I mean, not tonight, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there anything else outside of previous remembrance of discussions that we want to address?
There were several things in the ethical that we, we tore apart, uh, not just conflict of interest. There was one, if you go into it, um, if you don't mind going down, Kristen, into the bylaws to the ethical section. Just further down. Okay, we, we, uh, we talked about this ex parte communication and we talked about maintaining public impartiality. I mean, we had some, we made some changes to that. Uh, and I don't remember what they are right now.
Okay, I remember we discussed it and what that means, I didn't, I did not remember that we made changes to the document.
I think we made some changes, um, and the other thing is I thought we also, and this was something from Anne, that we. There are requirements to being a planning commissioner and we didn't meet those requirements, and so we were gonna change that language too.
That's a, architecture, construction, and engineering backgrounds are preferred.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we had some discussion about that, so I just remember there's, there was more.
I think we discussed it, I don't think we ever agreed on that.
Well, I think. I did go through the minutes and I, there was a lot of discussions, especially in the ethics section, there was a, a huge discussion on that. But I don't remember us changing any of the language, but we can reexamine that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, please.
Okay, anything new we want to add to the list? Man, it's hard, it's hard enough trying to get people on here anyways. Okay. All right, we good there?
I do have a question there.
Go ahead.
I guess, um, we've talked about a few times, just, um, your location and where you live, so. I mean, you talk about the Special Service District, representing them, that is a select few people that can do that.
It is.
I mean, so it's kind of not really open, but then, so we all represent somewhere, but we did talk about like Melissa's, where it's.
In, in this town of Bluff.
Yeah, so everybody else sits on the board, lives in non-incorporated San Juan County, I don't think you have to live in non. Incorporated San Juan County, but I do think that when we advertise going forward, I mean, I would like to see somebody. I mean, Bluff's great, I'm not, I'm not picking on Bluff, but, you know, we don't have anybody from that Mexican hat area or.
Well, that's why we.
Other areas that, you know, because, I mean, I live non-incorporated, Trent, everybody else, so we kind of bring that to, you know, and. We don't really get the, the Blanding, the Monticello, the Bluff, you know, I mean, it, it's nice to be non-incorporated.
Yeah, I, we've, we've loosened things because we're just trying to get representation. You know, like they, I believe back in the day, way back in the day, they did have Mexican hat.
So I just meant like going forward for Melissa's or whoever's, that, that those people are eligible to apply and, you know.
And, and they are now.
Shay, Shay's position is.
Shay, Shay's position is at large, so that could be anywhere within the county.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just.
But yeah, I, I agree with you.
I just meant, I just didn't want it to be, I mean, we haven't seen the advert, I mean, I just didn't want it to say.
We could talk about preference for representation in unincorporated.
Anyways, I would just, we had to bring that up sometime before we, we go forward.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to um, electing a new chair. Um, and I'll just bring that right up here. It's section two, election, the chairperson or vice-chairperson should be elected at the first meeting of the year. Again, we're a little bit behind here due to our constraints, um, and you shall serve one year. So, your term will start right here tonight after the election. Um, we'll take nominations by, by verbal and you can self-nominate and then we'll have a vote.
I'd like to nominate Trent to continue doing it if he's willing to, um, being somebody that's new. Um, I guess not quite new anymore, but still feel new. I mean, there's a period of time where you sit here and you don't know what you're doing and Trent brings a lot of knowledge and experience, so if he's willing to, I'd, I would nominate Trent to continue as chairperson.
I'll second that.
Who said that?
Lloyd.
Should've done you Lloyd, since you're not here, that should've been the punishment for not being in here in person.
He'll get, he'll get the next one.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, um, I'll, I'll do this one since Trent's involved, so all those in favor of nominated Trent, nominating Trent Schaefer for another year of glorious planning commissioner chair, say aye.
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 Thank you guys.
Vote's unanimous. So Trent, I'll let you keep going.
I don't know if, if I should really thank you guys.
You're welcome.
Okay. Um. Let's have nominations for vice-chair.
I'll nominate Lloyd. He's currently serving in that role, right?
Yes.
Seems like a good one for him.
Is that cuz I'm a loudmouth or?
Cuz you're not here.
And you're a loudmouth.
Okay. See, now that makes sense.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, all those nominating Lloyd, uh, Lloyd Wilson as vice-chair, please say aye.
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 Okay, excellent. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Needs to run that one meeting in the summer when Trent's in that Lake Powell.
Then that meeting goes long.
I think we should all go to Lake Powell that month.
All right, so let's jump into our legislative items. Um, so number three here. I wish this was working easier, but we'll deal. Um, we've been looking, working with Lisbon Valley Mine and Clint York's here tonight representing about the opportunity for an onsite employee housing. Um, they were really waiting for the ordinance to go through since that's looking like it's gonna be delayed. Um, they are requesting a zone change because this zone change is part of our critical issues, housing being that, um, this can come before us now. Um, and so in, in January, we actually received his, his request for his zone change. Um, it is part of a larger parcel and it is, as we had deemed it on the proposed map. Um, so it is industrial, it is a mining operation, um, but would like to change just this piece of it to multi-use. Um, even under multi-use now, housing would be available and I will let Clint tell us a little more. It's this, it's very small compared to everything else. It's this little blue square up here.
Okay.
Um, and Clint, I have your presentation, so if you wanna just give me like the.
Yeah, so I'm Clint York, been with Lisbon Valley off and on for twelve years. I've been back with them since September. I'm here tonight with Miranda Black, she's our HR representative and Ben Schultz is our new mine manager. He's been here about a month. Um, a little bit of, I'll keep this short as I can here, a little bit of history of Lisbon. I think most of you guys probably know where it's at, right off Three Step Hill. We are a uh, open pit copper mine heap leach. Uh, we've been in operation with the current group and as Lisbon Valley Mining since two thousand nine. And in that time, we've uh, produced a hundred and seventy-five million pounds of uh, grade A copper. At four dollar copper, that's about seven, seven, seven hundred million dollars. So uh, currently we've got seventy employees. We had a hundred and sixty back in November. We did a furlough slash layoff as a kind of a restructure, looking for um, uh, another capital investor to get us through some of our, uh, our plan down valley. Down valley, we have a resource of about five hundred million pounds of copper. Uh, and at four dollar copper, that's about two billion dollars worth. That, we're getting closer to uh, seeing the light on here. So this is something that uh, we've talked about for a long time and I think it's, it's needed for us to really get where we wanna go. Of those uh, ninety employees that we laid off and furloughed, we've got a portion of them that we're gonna be bringing back in May as our restructure and we're hoping to have over two hundred and fifty employees here as we begin to build the mine uh, later on this year. One of uh, the things if, that we struggle with is bringing some of our key technical folks into this area is, is, is housing, you know? They'll look and say, well, where am I gonna live? And in that timeframe, they can come down here and work, but there's nowhere for them to stay either. So this is something that it's, we're, it's kind of a two-pronged approach. We're looking at somewhere that they can come, they can get their feet wet, they can stay in it. And while they're working, they can also go out in the communities and figure out what they wanna do. Where they wanna live, where they wanna live in La Salle, where they wanna live in Monticello, Blanding, maybe even Colorado or Moab. I mean, I'm from Moab, that's not, it's, Moab has its own issues, but it's a other piece of it is bringing in some of the technical side of the pieces that it's hard to get those folks in this area. Um, some of the specialized pieces for working on equipment, um, skilled labor. This gives the opportunity where they could come down and work a, you know, a seven-on-seven-off shift and and we, and we could utilize them in that way. If you wanna shift, let's go to slide two maybe. So that's just the purpose there, kinda what I just explained, cost-effective solution, uh, the next slide. So what we are looking at is, is there's four acres just north of our current leach pad. Um, it would be an area that we'd, we'd fence in. Uh, it would be two phases. Uh, the first phase would be, would be three, four-bedroom units. So each unit is like, you walk in and each person, it'd be like, almost like a hotel. So you'd have a kitchen in the middle, but each person have a bedroom. So it's not, and you can look at other mines and you can say, and actually like a, like a man camp type thing where it's, they're shared everything. This is, this is more structured and a little bit nicer. Uh, this would give us the opportunity where you could, we could house twenty-eight people at a time. Another piece of this is that as we be, begin to build the mine down valley, we're gonna have a lot of construction going on. They're gonna have to build, there's a lot of stripping material, there's gonna be some, some ponds, we gotta build a lot of outside contractors that we're gonna be building and this is something that they could utilize instead of other options, cuz at times during the year, it's hard to find hotel rooms, it's hard to find rentals. This just makes it, it takes some of that away where they're just right there on site where they can work. Um, there'd be a, we'd have to bring in our, there's fresh water, but there's power on site. Uh, and the rest of it, we'd be working with engineering and, and local contractors to build it. So, if we go to the next slide. Yeah, that's just kinda showing where it's at. It's right off County Road one oh nine, which is right north of our leach pad. There's a little hill there that would separate the property and where it's gonna be located.
I think this, this is the little hill.
Yep, there's a little hill there.
So basically, there's a, there's a pretty good-sized berm between this site and looking at the mine.
So that project site right there is about four acres. What we've really only put down on paper right now for that first, first two phases is only covers about an acre and a half. There are fours just in case we ever, if this really took off for some reason, we need an extra area, we'd have it. So um, go to the next slide. Those are pictures of it. And the next is this is, this is my Excel version of just a layout, so uh, we haven't really put any, we haven't talked to any engineers or anything and put a lot of money into this. This is just something we wanted to see if we could get it, you know, passed, then we'd really take off and put some money into this thing, but that's kind of a layout, a parking lot, some trailers, there'd be uh, an, an R, an RO system and it would be fenced in and this would be basically a, a, a dry camp, so. And that's some of the, that's one of the manufacturers that we've been looking at on the, the units that we're looking at bringing in. So that's what we're asking for. I mean, this is something, uh, Lisbon's, I think always we've had a good partnership with San Juan County and we hope to, you know, have a lot of good days ahead. So the, the, some of the stuff down valley could bring many, many years to our mine life and hoping to bring a lot of, a lot of tax revenue and, and, and those sorts of things in, into the county. So if you guys have questions?
This is the first zone change I've been through. Um, and so just, you know, we can't, this is not the time to put like building stipulations. There might be some things like, well, what about safety? What about this? That would be the next stage. So the, right now, we're just limited to the zone change request to go to multi-use. So that they can take the next step to addressing maybe some other concerns that we might have down the road.
Is this a recommendation to?
It is a recommendation that we'll have to go to county commission.
I just have one question. Um, trust lands originally for the twenty twenty-five maps, we had it as multi-use, but then the trust land said they wanted it industrial. Um, the Lisbon Valley, so this would be like spot zoning for this one. Okay, I just wanna make sure it's spot zoning.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, we were kind of hoping for the ordinance to go through and that didn't happen and so we don't wanna hold up this project. Um, so they are
Nope, south.
Right, south, yeah. Rather all that to the right there, the bottom right.
Right here.
Right there.
So there they are on our map. And so, you know, there's we, we spot zoned the industrial for the mining sake, but now we're realizing that, you know, if we could pull out this little chunk for them, I think that's reasonable.
To do this, Kristen, did they have to go through like subdividing that property and stuff to create two parcels or?
No.
No. Here, okay.
It would just be noting it on our zoning map.
Still, still same owner.
So do we have a multi-use in the two thousand eleven ordinance?
Yes, so there's a multi-use zone in the two thousand eleven that would allow for this, this housing. And going forward, under our new ordinance, he would also be allowed. So it's kind of whichever way it goes, this would be a permitted allowed use.
I have a question. It's not so much is it me, it's just more I live here and curious, um, who do you, who do you anticipate? Well, when you say employees, I understand that, but like what are, what are you, what are you lacking now? Like, who aren't, what needs aren't being met? Cuz I, I'm just thinking of when you furloughed, laid off people, you know? I knew a lot of them. A lot of them were from Blanding, you know? So I'm just thinking, well, I can see how, I mean, how the housing works for you, but is this, who is it offered to? I mean, there's lots of local people that want to work there. I mean, is this to bring in out-of-state people, other people, cheaper people?
And that's, I get what you're, I get exactly what you're saying and, and, and when it comes to locals, we want all the locals to come back. It's, if there are positions that are open that we get outside folks that wanna put in for them. We've had many a times where it's like, they wanna accept the job and move down here, but there's not, there's not that transition zone of, 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 of being able to do it. Because they come down here, well, and then, I mean, maybe Miranda can speak to some of this. There's, there's not that time where like, it's hard to go find a rental, let's put it that way. So this is something that we can stick them in and then you guys can figure it out as you go and, and it's basically, it's just a, it's a bridge to get them to be a full-time resident. So if you wanna speak to me, yeah, she's probably can speak to this a little bit better than me.
Um, so I'm Miranda, I'm the HR professional with the mine. I've been there about three and a half years and what I found in my time is, first off, at a hundred and seventy, we were already expending our workforce in the area and bringing individuals from Idaho, Nevada, Montana around the state and what we found was um, those individuals were really short-lived. When they're having to stay in RV, hotel, rent, it's not sustainable. So, um, really to hit that two hundred, two fifty mark, we're gonna need our local workforce and full force in addition to some outside brought into the community. And then the other piece is, there's a really unique technical set that we can't find in our current population, certainly some, but uh, the ten-year diesel mechanic that's worked in the mining setting or the geologist with a degree in copper experience, um, chemists, engineers, those four-year degree, really specialized traits. We don't have a large group to pull from. Um, the other piece is I think it benefits our local workforce. We plan to bring back because we're bringing in the skillset that they can then learn from through formal training on site or informal on the job, just working side by side with each other.
Can I add some stuff from our discussion?
Yeah.
This is not meant for per, like, I wanna reiterate, this is not permanent housing. This is, you might be coming in from out of state for two weeks and this is where you're at. Or, um, you're two months in and you're trying to find a place to rent, but this, I wanna reiterate that this is very short-term. Um, it could even be the discussion we had like shift work, like somebody lives, I don't know, let's say Mexican Hat. They don't wanna drive it every day, that they could come on shift. And that's an important piece of why this is a dry, this would be a dry facility. This is not a party house, this is, this is a staff worker bee bunkhouse.
I'll say one more thing. So we've got some of our equipment, like, we've got a hundred-ton haul trucks. There's talk of two hundred-ton haul trucks down the road maybe, and there's, to work in those pieces of equipment, there's not, there's not a whole lot of them out there. So some of that, and those guys are in high demand, whether it's a mechanic, some of our really high voltage electricians. Like, there's only so many of those in the state. So some of those guys, they might wanna stay living where they're at and this gives them an opportunity where we could bring them in, train our guys, but they might be here seven days on, seven days off. But it just gives us other options to bring those pieces in, cuz right now, like, yeah, they'll look at things and be like, yeah, I mean, they kinda wanna live where they wanna live, but this might get them down here and they might end up loving it and being full-time residents. So there's, there's a different, there's a lot of different pieces that this plays into, but this just helps us, it's a, it's another tool in our bag. I mean, when I wanted to move back, I grew up in Moab, when I wanted to move back and work for the mine, if I wouldn't have my parents to live with as that transition, it would've been rough, just trying to find a rental. I mean, it is, this is, it's, it's something where I could've maybe left my family back where they were for a moment, come up here, figure it out for a month or two, make a, a good decision and, and then, then bring them here. So it's, it's, there's a lot of different pieces that this, that we've felt through the years. This is very important for us to meet some of these staffing goals.
Just another comment. I totally get what you're, what you're saying and I've had a conversation with another large employer in the county. But I won't use their name, but they have an approach. That I like a little bit more and I'm not, I'm not against it, I'm for, it's just a comment. That they've talked about going in their nearest community and saying, hey, we would like to partnership with. So and so, and we would like to put in a thirty unit trailer court. So we will partner with you, we will guarantee you X, you know? And then you put that in and then if it's not used by us, it can be used by. By other people for low income housing that we always talk about and the county needs so much more of. And so I really, I like that because it's in a community. I understand there's the travel, but I also like how. They become part of that community, be it Monticello, Spanish Valley, Blanding, whatever it might be, rather than. Some trailers on the job site, that they're not, they're not part of any community. They're not part of a tax base. It's just, it's just a comment, it's not a complaint. I, I, I get, there's not enough housing. You know, and I know other people face this exact same problem. I just really like the thought of. You know, like, hey, there's a vacant block here in Monticello and we stick them in there and. Then they can stay there, they're there forever. You own them, whatever, it's just, it's just a thought. I'm not, I'm not saying we'll vote against this or not, or not recommend it, but I just, I think it makes a little more sense to me. To have those, I get the travel, you know, and the, and the hours, but I, I kinda like that other approach that I, that I've heard as well.
I think the other piece, we, we've looked at a lot of different options. It's the, um. Security, cleaning, some of the maintenance of the site where we're so far away. It makes sense to have it close by where we can continue to meet the needs of the people staying there. Uh, with that said. I want them to contribute somehow to the community, so in ways that we can advertise. San Juan County grocery stores, restaurants, things that they can go shop to, where we talked about. Having like informational booklets inside of the units and then, um.
Working with realtors.
Yeah, talk to realtors and be open to other ways to.
Like, I've, I've seen it both ways. Sylvia.
I just wanna make a comment, um.
Will you come up to the microphone so that those online can hear you?
All that talk loud. Anyway, um, I just wanna say that. What Cody's talking is one, another solution. And Miranda and I and other people from energy field. People from Sela, we have a ten members who we've been meeting about trying to find solution and I think there's. We have a crisis in Houston and so we, that's one, the idea, the podcast is one, the mini solution. And so we hope by the time we get done, where those meetings will have answers to all the possibilities. Right now, we have been doing inventories, our land that the county owns, so every time we meet. Part of the puzzle, and so I think. Solution for this is necessary for shift workers. I think what is solution is more for more permanent workers and so we are looking into since we met. Last time about a project.
Thank yous. Hey Trent, let me add real quick. Um, I, I, I know we're questioning and looking at this like a conditional use, the way, the way we're beating around it, we're. This is a zone change, um, whether they do short-term. Um, employee housing, long-term employee housing, if they come back and build houses or nightly rentals, whatever fits in that multi-use, that's what we're looking at. It's not the fact of, you know, this is just a conditional use, we'll see them again next year, so. The questions and the, the answers that are coming about, we just need to make sure that is this the right. Choice on a zone change, because I mean, once the zone change is done, if it's in that zone, it doesn't matter what they do. And I'm not saying I'm not for it. I think we need the employee housing. I'm just, I'm just stating that instead of treating it like a conditional use, that we're gonna see them next year. To make sure and verify that they're only doing some employee housing. We just need to make sure it's. Something that is, that you can live with forever.
Thank you for reiterating that one.
On that note, I was looking through the ordinance the other day and I thought I found the procedure for doing a zone change in the two thousand eleven document. But I cannot find it today. You guys point me to the right page. Yeah, or just tell me the page number so I can find it. I've got it pulled up here.
It's in the first section. So it is under. I thought I cut and paste it into this. So it kinda starts here, under your powers and duties, um. For land use decisions and then it continued. Anyways, it's in, it's in this, so your powers and duties are zoning maps, um.
Alright.
So people would have, they have time to appeal this decision before it goes to county commission.
Right, okay.
Um, so we have to, if you're thinking of timing wise, we have to allow those ten business days.
Yeah, alright.
I have, I have a technical question as well, so. So the public hearing's going to be before the county commission. Why isn't the public hearing before the planning commission on this one?
Because it's a recommendation, not an approval. And we only have to do one and so we're doing it with the final approving body. You could, you could call for a public hearing if you would like.
We've had enough of those lately.
So, if you deem it necessary, you can go that route.
So Craig, make up my wrong, the Wilcoxes are the only ones that are in any. Close range to this, correct?
Three-step highway students.
Is, are they closer?
Are they what?
Are, are they closer than the Wilcoxes?
Yes.
Okay.
You're talking about this one here, yeah? Wait, no, three steps.
The multi-use, the, the big one.
I don't know why our map underneath is going away. It's there.
The big multi-use to your right.
Down at the bottom.
There you go, that.
Don't drive, who's driving?
So I thought we were right here, correct?
Yeah, so that's the, that's the zone getting changed.
Yeah, that's all that piece to the, to the left on the screen, that's the Hager property out there.
So I mean, it's in, personal opinion, it's in line with. The other surrounding properties being multi-use. It was multi-use to begin with.
Yep, I would agree.
I go back to your ma- map, so. This, this here is multi-use currently.
We, we suggested it to be, um. Industrial, but under the two thousand thirteen zoning map.
Yeah, let's, let's go back to these old maps that we love so much.
And this is the best I can do. Yes, it's pixely, I know, that's why we're trying to change it. So right now, it's in this strip of just industrial controlled district, that whole corridor is. And actually, I think you might have some parts and pieces out in ag.
So today, today, not with new zoning.
So right now, it's industrial.
So Kristen, what would be the next step after, if we made a motion to. Recommend this to the commissioners as a zone change, is there a second step to this?
Yes, so if we recommend it, um, it would go to the county commissioners on April first. And they, they would.
Which ordinance is that under?
Eleven.
Two, it's all under two thousand eleven and it's a two thousand thirteen zoning map.
Cause I think it does say that has to have a thirty days notice and public hearing.
I believe it's ten in state law right now.
Okay, so I'm looking at page fourteen in the two thousand and eleven.
Right, but state, state law is gonna trump us because the two thousand eleven is out of date.
That's why we.
Okay, so that you're, you're, so where are we getting the state law?
So if you go to chat, the Utah code for counties.
For zoning changes, that's where I'd find it?
Yeah.
And, and they've changed it to ten days.
I, I can't. It's ten days to appeal, but then, so here's the process, we would.
I just wanna make sure we're following the right process.
They have ten days to appeal the planning commission. We have to post the public hearing fourteen days out. Which means we can't do it on the eighteenth. It would go to April first. For the county commission, a public hearing would be at county commission and then they have. Ten days after that decision to appeal that decision.
Okay, as long as that's. That's, uh, that we're following the right process. Cause yeah, it contradicted what two thousand eleven said, so I was just double, just wanting to clarify what we're, what we're following.
Is that the question you're asking Lloyd though, or are you asking?
No, no, my question was, will we see this again?
No. This is done unless they come in for another zone change.
Okay, cause I misunderstood you earlier. You said that this is just the first step and so.
The first step in the building process, they haven't done any architectural or engineering on this yet. We are, and that's why I tried to preface this conversation, this is just a zone change, that is the scope that we can do. And that's it.
So, so when they can come back in, it'll just go before. Um, our building department and our planning zoning administrator.
You're not gonna see it, no, you're not gonna see it again. It will go to our building official, whoever that may be. And so their next step would be getting drawings together for a building permit.
So it doesn't come back, we don't hear anything else on it.
Correct.
Kristen. Following up on Ann's comment there. We can make it more strict than what the state says, right? So we could stretch it to a thirty day thing, which is what our zoning says we have done.
Sure.
Which is what our thing says, so should we make sure?
I don't think so though, that's not like.
We can't make it less. Could make it more, which we have done.
But a lot of the state, my understanding is kinda like on the, on the subdivision. They put those times in so they don't get drug on forever.
So we can't keep dragging them through it.
Yeah, it's like the twenty day for, um, subdivisions, that's not our, they don't wanna, cause it's taking too long.
I think we're getting a little off, we're getting way into the weeds. This is a mixed use zone change, do we want it or not? If so, make sure that we're in line on getting public hearings posted.
I mean, what we're supposed to be looking at is one dash thirteen in the two thousand eleven document, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
What did you say, Ann?
Um, well, if we're clear on which process we're gonna follow, then I, I would be ready to make a motion.
And what would that be?
Oh, I would make a motion to, uh, recommend a zone change for Lisbon Valley Mine for the onsite employee housing.
To multi-use.
To multi-use zone.
Okay.
From industrial to multi-use.
Okay, I know what second that. Uh, you, you're way too late.
Yeah, we're good.
Oh, did I miss it? Yeah, and I'm not sure which one of these two got the second.
I put Walker's name on it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to recommend to the county commissioners. A zone change on four acres from industrial to multi-use for employee housing. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? One opposed. Motion carries.
Appreciate it.
Okay, number four.
I'm like, let me drive, let me drive, let me drive. Okay, the next one, and I'm not sure, is it Scott here? Yeah, thanks for coming. So, um, sorry for being here last month too. Um, this is for a conditional use permit, thanks for coming, guys. Um, it's for a temporary me- meteorological tower, um, by AES Energy. Um, so these guys have been working with us since November, this has been a long-winded. Conditional use permit, it's, um, on a hundred and sixty acres, but. Um, as you'll see in the drawings, it's actually a very limited space that this takes up. Um, that is in ag zone as per the two thousand thirteen map and the two thousand eleven ordinance, um. This would fall under renewable energy because it is testing weather patterns for a wind farm.
I'm against it then, no wind farm.
So here's, here's some of the conditions, but I'd like to, before we deep dive into the conditions, I'd like to give some time over. To their presentation. Let me pull that up for you. Oh wait, it's in here. Okay, so here's the parcel and let me, I'll pull it up here.
Let Trump go, we have three other wind farms.
So. Harass him. Just cause the, the shot that they gave you doesn't really do justice of where it is, so here's where it is, it's.
Significantly north.
It's way out there. And there's that little pin of where it will actually be.
Um, it's like several miles northeast of Monticello.
So here you go.
Yes, well, so we're not putting up a wind turbine by any means, um, we're just putting up. A meteorological tower, I'm just gonna refer to it as a MET tower from now on, cause it's easier to say. Um, MET towers are very common in agricultural areas, there are actually a few in the county up already. Um, it'd be sixty meters tall, which is about a hundred and ninety-seven, a hundred and ninety-six feet. Um, there's no like concrete foundation or anything and they're actually assembled and disassembled in a matter of a day or two. Um, it's pretty much just a tall pole that has white and red or orange, depending on the different, different guidelines. Like alternating colors and there are little cups that just measure the wind speed that are basically attached like to the pole. And then it's just supported with guy wires. And all of the drawings I included as well.
Do you wanna talk anymore about your? No.
No.
No, it's, it's.
Um, yeah, so I work for AES, we're actually the current owners and operators of the existing wind farm. And we are just hoping to measure the wind speeds over in that county to see if expansion would be possible in the future.
Same county.
County?
Same county.
See, as, in that section of the county.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, in that part of the county, um, just to see if there basically is possible for expansion in the future. Um, the first step in that is just gathering wind speed data, which you can find. Inaccurate data, you know, on government websites and stuff, but really the only way to know accurate data is from measuring on the ground. Um, this first MET tower would be up for like minimum of one year to give us an idea. Um, and, you know, it's one of many different things we have to do in our very early due diligence. The odds of being able to expand are low, but we just like to know what's possible.
And you will take it down?
Yes.
Okay.
If, um, if it's one year minimum, what's the maximum that would be up?
Well, we, we've like put this land under a lease and, uh, that lease would. Like we'd have to start potential construction on a wind project in six years. So the max possible by like the terms of the lease would be six years, but it wouldn't be up for that long, I don't believe.
And we could list that as part of the conditions if you would like, um. And we could list that as part of the conditions if you would like, um, this project might. Everything with energy takes extra long with all the federal guidelines and stuff, and so. Um, this one might be vested based on those steps, not actually getting the tower up in a year. And to vest him in that conditional use.
We would, we would expect to be able to put the met tower up sometime this spring or summer, but that would be the only. Construction that would happen potentially like for several years. And yeah, it takes up less than an acre of footprint, you can continue to have grazing rights on the land. Um, the people that lease this land are ranchers and use it for ranching and they can continue to do so, so.
Scott, you guys have to, you guys have funds bonded for the decommission.
Yes.
Things, right?
Yeah.
Who enforces that? Is that through the county, or is that through like a different agency that requires you to have those bonds?
Well, so the bonds wouldn't really be necessary for a met tower because frankly, they're not very expensive. Um, so if you wanted to put it as part of your condition- conditional use permit that we're required to take it down within a certain timeline, that's something we'd be happy to agree to.
Okay, so that would be through us, not through?
Wind project, that's all bonded, but for a met tower, I mean, the instruction, the installation cost is less than a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, and that includes all the data stuff as well, so typically these aren't bonded and yeah, they can be taken down in like two days with a couple guys in a pickup truck.
I have a concern about how it says that lights aren't needed, I saw that she said under two hundred feet. And so I looked at the FAA.
I, yeah.
Website and it actually says.
That mistake, yeah, so at the, in the state of Utah actually requires a flashing light um on the top. That would, it's visible from two thousand feet away, so. Wouldn't be seen from further than a half mile from the, from the um met tower location.
Okay, so I think that. That needs to be added as a condition.
I caught that as a, as an.
We have the condition, the tower shall be operating in compliance with state and federal regulations.
Yeah, including lighting.
Yes, yeah, I, Utah's actually the first state I've worked in that requires lights on their met towers, so that was an oversight on my end. When I submitted this thing back in November.
And how far away is the closest runway?
Four or five miles.
Yeah, and if it's under two hundred feet, the FAA doesn't require clearance. It's just under.
Yeah, so you're, the Monticello airport's way out here.
Cody could hit it.
Yeah, we've done, we've done some work with um like airspace consultants to make sure that we're far enough away from the airport. That's to not disturb any activities going on there.
It's farther away than probably their current windmills there.
Significantly further than that.
So let me read through the conditions, I'll read them so Cody doesn't have to. So, we have the conditions that prior to construction, the applicant shall apply for and receive a county. Uh, building permit. Um, this one's gonna be fairly low-key because there's not that much to inspect on it. The applicant shall apply for, receive and maintain a business license. And is subject to inspections associated with that business license and with the conditional use conditions. The construction and operation of the tower shall comply with international fire code and San Juan County Fire Policy, subject to inspections. The tower shall operate, this one has changed, shall be operated in compliance with state and federal regulations, including lighting. Tower should not be used for outdoor advertising. Um, this permit shall be null and void if the tower is abandoned or the tower is not maintained for ninety days. And shall be removed at the owner's expense. Any neighbor or adjacent property owner, a person reasonably expected to be at or near the facility during construction, maintenance or other activity. Which has potential to harm an individual shall be informed of the activity and provided with safe information as appropriate. The facility shall be kept clean and free from rubbish. Um, and the tower require a variance from the San Juan County Land Use Ordinance, which establishes the maximum height for structures at thirty-five feet. So he'll have to go through that secondary step.
Anybody want to add or omit any of that?
Did you say that it'll be, that it will not be up more than six years?
We did not put a limit on this, so it's it's temporary, if you would like to. Adjust a limit, I think we need to specify from the point of installation and not necessarily from the point of this conditional use.
I agree with that. Cause when you said the lease is six years, right, so he could potentially go out and sign another six-year lease. But at that point, I think it's probably worthwhile to revisit it.
Okay, so what would you like to add?
Uh, I think that uh, what was the language? Shall be taken down after six years.
Yeah, well, she'll be, yeah, that.
Maximum of six years.
Maximum of six years.
Totally fine, that'll give us plenty of data we won't need anymore.
I'm not gonna retire, but.
Trent will still be here.
Trent will be doing his like tenth term.
Okay, so we will include language on the conditional use uh certificate, that the tower shall have a maximum lifespan of six years.
That work?
Yeah, that's right. Hopefully we'll have it down a lot sooner than that.
I know it's another one you can take down.
I've heard there's a couple hanging out.
Okay, I move that we approve. The met tower with the. The conditional use for the met tower would be conditions that Kristen read and and adjusted.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve a conditional use permit. With conditions applied that were previously read and added to. Any further discussion?
I have a que- question. You just mentioned that there were some towers that are still hanging out there that haven't been removed.
Yes.
What, why is that?
Uh, those were not put up by our company, so I can't exactly speak to why.
But I guess, I just meant in general, does anybody know how that happens, where they get abandoned like that and left up?
I can speak to it a bit, um.
One's on my place, by the way.
Yeah, so. Uh, in the not-so-distant past, the renewable energy market was pretty much a Wild West scenario. And you had companies who, if they could strap together some cash, they would try and put together projects. Um, without really any financial backing capable of building them. Um, and so that led to some issues like that, where people left met towers up despite saying they'd take them down. Uh, because the companies would fold, um AES is a publicly traded company on the stock exchange. Um, we're an American company, we have a very large market cap and we're capable financially of taking this down.
Okay, it's just helpful for another item on the agenda maybe later.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving this conditional use permit as stated, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Mister Chair, I think with the um. The rezoning, we didn't follow the law. I found the law.
Uh, in the state?
In the state.
Okay.
There should be a public hearing before us, even though it is a recommendation. This is um chapters, it's seventeen twenty, twenty-seven A five zero two. Preparation and adoption of land use regulation, and it says, um. We're supposed to hold a public hearing and.
For the planning commission or for the legislative?
It says a planning commission, so we should have held a pu- the hearing should have been before us.
Well. Strike that and we'll do it.
Okay, I will let them know.
It won't slow it down.
It's seventeen twenty-seven A five zero two, and I, and then I went and looked at. The definition of land use regulation and rezoning falls within that.
Sure would be hard to have legal around at some of these meetings.
They're here, Ann, he's sitting right here, thank you.
You all can take a look at it, seventeen.
Twenty-seven A, yep, Trent's looking at it and he's, he's nodding his head.
So, anyway. Let's, I'll, I'll take a look, there's five little.
Yeah, it's um one B.
Well, that's why I voted against it.
You were prescient.
You guys just do whatever you want, but some of us follow the law.
Cody knew, and we don't need paying five hundred dollars an hour.
No.
Okay, number five. And I'm out.
Okay, number five is for the solar project. Um, for EG Orion, this is a conditional use permit, Dell Harris is online, I believe.
Yes, ma'am. Apologize, I didn't make it in person.
You're fine, thanks for coming out last month and then going home. Um, so this isn't for Infinity Global, this was received in January. Um, and uh they've been working on this project a long time and they are ready to. Pull the trigger on it finally, after a lot of legwork. Um, the project is uh approximately a hundred and ninety-nine megawatts of alternating current. Um, solar photovoltaic renewable energy with a four hundred megawatt hours of energy storage and an onsite substation. Um, the project will connect the facility output to the existing transmission lines. Between Pinto and Huntington substations, which is owned by Pacific Core or Rocky Mountain Power. Um, there's the parcels, collectively, all these parcels are one thousand seven hundred and twenty acres. Um, under the two thousand and eleven, can uh renewable energy for solar is a conditional use. Let me pull up this parcel. Oops, that's our next one. I know, we're close, I just wanna pull up the exact one. So it is. So this is part of it. So it is several of these parcels put together here, and he's got a better map in his, um. He's got a better map in his proposal, but let me zoom out so you understand the area. So. There is Monticello. Um, so this is behind Tarb Road, so here is um the airport, here is Elk Meadows. And heading down into the canyon, so this is up on top still. Um, so Dell, we'll jump into your, before we get into the conditional uses, I have your, can you see what I'm showing?
I can see it on the TV, but I can't actually see it on the screen, and I was actually gonna share the presentation I have that shows the project location.
Perfect, okay, we'll just turn it over to you then.
Okay, now can you see, oh, I can't share my screen. Okay. Let's try just window here. Try starting your browser if this problem continues, there's an issue with sharing. Uh, Tom, are you able to uh share this presentation? Right now, I apologize, it's saying there's an error with the browser, I need to restart it to share it.
Yeah, hey, Tom Anderson with Infinity here, I was not able to get in on the video, so I'm only in on the phone, Dale.
Okay.
So you could also email it to me real quick, like, and we'll pull it up. Oh, perfect, we got it, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, perfect, perfect. Okay, well, I skipped to the project location there, we can go back a little bit here, there's a little bit of a brief overview of Infinity. Uh, we are also a US-based company. And. We're a US-based company with headquarters in Miami, Florida and offices in Dallas. Uh, we have over four hundred megawatts of operational assets with over nineteen gigawatts in development in almost a dozen states. Um, we, we uh develop energy solutions that contribute to the all-of-the-above energy approach. There's a few photos of some of our operational assets. There's some of the locations, a little bit more details. And then uh this is uh some details on the project itself, uh some of these were already covered by Kristen. I think what's important to note is that project is estimated to cost around three hundred million dollars. Um, which could potentially bring almost thirty million dollars in tax revenue uh to San Juan County over the life of the project. Which is estimated to be around thirty-five years. Uh, during the year and a half to two-year construction period, we're looking at bringing around two hundred and fifty to three hundred jobs. Uh, we'll hire as much locally as possible, uh but as you guys are aware, this is a pretty large influx in uh. And jobs, and we will have to bring in jobs from other areas in the state as well as outside of the state. Uh, something important to note here, I know that uh some of the uh CRP uh fees were discussed and the project will. Um, pay any sort of the uh back fees to CRP. And we are also committed to a long-term relationship with San Juan County, since we are gonna be the owners and operator of this project. This is the project location, you'll see nine point four miles outside of Monticello. Oh, and one point seven miles off of the highway. It's very important to note the location of this project, um because of how far. Uh setback it is from not only Monticello, but also from the highway. I know Kristen had discussed uh concerns of the the visual impact. Um, and I want to highlight that we we cited this project to prevent any sort of major visual impact. These are some of the property owners. Involved in the project. And this is going to be the planned uh site access, which is gonna be off of County Road uh three twenty. That connects to US Highway one ninety-one. Please, if anybody has any questions, feel free to stop me. This is a uh. Image of the project layout. We've used this project layout uh and wind planner software, which is a new tool that we just acquired to provide visual simulations. If you see here, there's gonna be three different vantage points that we have simulated this project. Uh, and the max height of these solar panels is gonna be right around ten feet tall. So as we see, this is vantage point number one, there is no view of the project. When we go to vantage pu- vantage point number two, again, no view of the project. And then lastly, the third vantage point we chose, there will be no view of the project. It is only gonna be a total of ten feet tall, and we've set it back far enough off the highway and away from Monticello. That you will not actually be able to to see it from any major points within the city. This is just a image of what a lot of these uh best containers look like, they're non-occupiable. Um, containers, which increases the safety of them. Here's a little bit about uh. Fire safety for batteries, uh we work with third-party fire consultants to make sure that we're meeting all of the uh fire code standards. And there's been a lot of improvement in uh battery testing. And the batteries that are installed on these facilities are much different than what you would see in a, in a car battery. Uh, they go through extensive thermal runaway testing. Um, and the codes that they are uh engineered to meet nowadays uh make them extremely safe. Uh, this is some of the environmental assessments uh that we had done on the project. As you guys are aware, there's a, there's a uh Gunnison-Sage grouse critical habitat in Yales County. Um, and we actually, when initially citing this project, had fallen within that critical habitat, worked with US Fish and Wildlife. and after coordinating with them for the past couple of years, um, we had cited the project outside of that critical habitat, and they have actually given us the sign-off that there is gonna be no major, uh, impact to Gunnison Sage grouse. We've also performed onsite wetland delineation, been in coordination with US Army Corps of Engineers. Um, as Kristen said, we've, we've done, uh, a lot of work on this project over the past two years, and we're still in the middle stage of development, we still have a few more years' worth of due diligence to do. Here's gonna be a, a brief overview of the, the project schedule, these are preliminary dates and subject to change. Um, the ener- energy industry can be very dynamic, and, and we're working with a lot of, uh, different agencies that we need to make. Uh, here are some of the highlights on the project. Again, on private land, approximately seventeen hundred and twenty-three acres, it's connected to a Pacific Corp three hundred forty-five KV line. Um, no major cultural or archeological concerns. Um, no concerns of wetlands, uh, impacts to the wetlands, and, uh, no concerns of any threatened and endangered species. And thank you guys for your time. Happy to answer any questions y'all might have.
Hey Dale, is the three hundred and forty-five KV lines already existing onsite?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And that's a huge transmission line headed out?
Yeah. So they wouldn't have to add any tran- uh, transmission?
Part of the siding of this, tapping that line.
Yep. We've, we've actually already applied for interconnection with Pacific Corp on that line.
Okay.
Dale, is this the biggest, um, biggest site you will have done?
By the time this is constructed, no, this will not be.
Okay, but currently, the ones that you sort of showed up were all small, that you put up all look to be smaller.
Uh, yes, ma'am, this, this is larger than any of our current operational assets, but in the industry in general, the scale of them has, uh, increased, uh, pretty dramatically due to economies of scale. And just the cost of panels and the efficiency of them going up.
I did a little bit of math just to figure out how big this thing is. And, um, I looked up Caillenda, which is the closest sort of, sort of solar farm we all see. Um, and this is twenty-one times bigger than Caillenda, which is pretty significant.
There's one in between Montzuma Creek and Red Mesa.
Yeah, the Red Mesa one, yeah, but I, Caillenda's the one we see.
The Red Mesa one, I believe, is about five hundred acres.
Yeah, Caillenda, okay. So this would be?
Three times as big as that?
No, much bigger than that.
Three times as big as Red Mesa?
Three ti- that's five hundred acres.
How big's the one in Wellington?
That's, I was just gonna ask.
Twelve hundred, fifteen hundred?
Yeah. Would you have to pay for landowners?
I don't think the math works for under a thousand acres, at least that's what I was told.
Um, so, so, so we're going to get, the county's gonna get thirty million over thirty-five years. Um, and I thought, I'd like to have, um, Cassie's concern addressed about how this is currently greenbelt. And so it will go out of greenbelt into commercial?
And, and they'll have to pay those, the five-year rollback?
And they'll pay the five-year rollback, and I heard Dale say that they would pick up the CRP, which I guess is different from the rollback? Is that correct?
I think that is a rollback that you were talking about, isn't it, Dale?
Kristen? I believe that is the rollback.
Yeah.
Kristen, can I add to this?
Sure, Lloyd, go ahead.
In Utah, while the Farmland Assessment Act, also known as Green Belt, aims to protect agricultural land, dual uses like solar farms are not inherently prohibited, but the primary use must be, still be, um, agricultural. So they can stay in the greenbelt as long as they are not affecting grazing rights. This is what I just found on the internet.
But that would be the primary use of the land, whereas it looks like the primary use of the parcels is solar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that, that just affects the taxes paid on the parcel, right?
Right, property taxes. Yeah, that would be a necessary question.
Yeah. Right.
What are the, what are the setbacks from the property boundaries?
Sorry, sorry, go ahead, from.
Yeah, sorry, this is Tom Anderson, um, ju- just, uh, to clarify how we're looking at this. Um, w- we are looking at it just simply as, as a rollback and, and compensating, uh, for the, uh, essentially the uplifting of the land, to the extent that maybe it could remain greenbelt, we're, we're, we're not really planning on that, uh, for tax purposes.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that.
So they're not really planning on the land still being available to have a greenbelt tax status going forward?
They're not expecting that, yeah.
Right, so going forward, the landowners will then have to pay, you know, the increased tax rate.
Okay.
But, again, outside of our scope.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Right, outside of our scope, but still worth noting.
Yeah.
That's kind of the case with the gravel pit or?
Right. Hey, oh, go ahead.
Oh, well, go ahead, TC.
Hey Dale, I seen you mention here the, uh, workforce you were looking at bringing in for construction. What is the, what's the expected long-term workforce for maintenance of the place?
We're looking at two to three people.
Okay, thank you.
Long-term.
Can, can we go to the, the agreement that they have? Cause I had some comments about it, if you go to page fifty-eight.
Are you looking at this document?
Yeah, I guess it's that document, so go to page, I think fifty-eight, as you go down, if you scroll down to fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight of their document or our document?
I think it's our document, but I'll be able to tell you. Okay.
There's fifty-eight of theirs.
No, it's, no, it's.
Is it their fifty-eight?
I don't know, so, so there's any, there, there's a discussion of surface water impacts?
That was.
Yeah, where you were at.
Yeah, okay, so it is there, so, um, I would like to have, um, a condition added that any any recommendations coming out of that analysis are addressed? Or has that been completed? Dale, the surface water assessment, the analysis?
So we will do a more in-depth surface water analysis, uh, closer to construction.
Okay.
There has been a preliminary.
I think, I think there needs to be a condition about any surface water issues need to be addressed. Then, on the next one, the floodplains and drainage. Um, I think we need to add a condition that they meet the requirements, if you can go up, Kristen, just a bit, uh, uh, down, I guess. So it talks about, um, how they have to get these permits. And I think we need to just ensure that they get those. That they obtain the, the, they obtain the updes permit, and, um, any recommendations that come out of this stormwater management plan?
So under what floodplains? Do we have FEMA mapping on that?
We do not have any floodplains documented in our county.
So we, we cannot enforce something that we do not have?
So I think what Melissa's saying is whatever their study shows, that they will uphold those recommendations out of their own study.
Okay. And I do think the, Melissa might be referring to the US Army Corps of Engineers, which we have been coordinating with and submitted the wetland delineation, um, to them over a year ago. And any recommendations that they provide to us on the site, we will incorporate.
Okay, is that a, is that a condition?
Surface water issues need to be addressed and appropriate drainage permits are obtained.
Okay. Thanks, Kristen.
Hey Dale, you quickly went over, uh, some energy storage or battery solutions, um, and, and showed us one of the containments for it. Do you guys have a program in your company or, or sub somebody out to provide training to local first responders on the hazards of those batteries?
Absolutely. We will have an emergency response plan developed in coordination with local agencies, both fire and, uh, emergency response.
Okay.
Yeah, that was one thing we talked about in our pre-meeting.
Sweet.
Uh, around the, the border of the whole thing, what are, what's the setbacks on that? Is that in, are there setbacks for this?
Yeah, they're gonna be well within the setbacks. I mean, you've got like forty feet, eighty-seven feet. I mean, our setback might be, I think it's eight feet inside, so.
We do a minimum of fifty feet.
Minimum of fifty, okay.
Yeah. Of the solar panels.
Yeah, I know there's a, there's a concern with solar about, um, thermal events and that kind of stuff, and I don't want that to affect the neighboring, you know, they're growing anything out there, I don't want that to affect that, so, but it's fifty feet, sounds.
I had a curiosity question, why do you need title insurance since you're not purchasing the property?
So even if we were to do a lease, we would need title insurance on a, on a property to, to make sure that we're leasing it from the, um, appropriate party.
It's basically a, a title background check, title search.
But some of the land will be purchased while some of the land is leased.
Lloyd, why don't you step in here?
I got a question.
What's that?
Lloyd, you're gonna have to take this one for the vote if we're there, and you have a question?
I've got another question.
Go ahead.
Um, so, going back to cleanup, um, in the size and scale, you know, of this, for ex- for how, uh, Dale, can you tell us how many panels this is gonna be?
You're muted.
You're unmuted, you're, you're unmuted.
You're still muted.
I got you.
Fine, I got it unmuted. Uh, it's gonna be a, approximately three hundred and seventy thousand panels.
Three hundred thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand panels, okay. Um, and these giant batteries stored in containers. Um, I know you said, you know, Infinity Global US is a company that we should hope wouldn't go out of business, but we don't know, how do we how do we negotiate what happens at the end of life of this solar field? What is the lifespan of it?
Thirty-five to forty years.
Thirty-five to forty years, so, at that point, if you're still around, how do we, how, what is the, um, plan for, for decommissioning it?
We will have a de- decommissioning bond put in place.
Okay, so that protects the county? Is everybody good with that?
Who, uh, who ensures that that bond is in place? What agency?
Right now, so in Utah, I'm not sure that there is an agency that assures it. You guys could make that as a condition of approval.
Should do that.
In, in other states, there are agencies that are responsible for assuring that the bond is put in place.
So you would like to add ensure that, um, end-of-life bond?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think for Trent's grandchildren or whoever else is gonna have that land going forward, you know, people of San Juan County need to have some assurance that that if it's no longer viable, that it's not sitting there as a hazard or a nuisance, or whatever it is.
Absolutely, I mean, a lot of it would be recycled, um, there's a lot of steel, a lot of, uh, valuable metals that could be recycled from the site. Uh, but we do agree that a decommissioning bond being put in place makes it, um, everybody, uh, more secure about the project. And, uh, we do recommend that if we put a decommissioning bond condition in place, that it's reviewed every five years and refreshed to make sure that there is enough bond to decommission the site. This is what we've seen other agencies do.
Okay, as long as there's some kind of common practice to protect, uh, you, future landowners in the county.
Kristen, did you get that word-for-word from Dale?
No, I have ensured decommission bond is in place prior to construction, because we don't know what entity that is yet with this state or us, or?
And reviewed every five years.
And reviewed every five years.
Yeah, I read that news.
Can I get first, uh, some clarification, uh, so he said he'd pay back the CRP, what about the county?
So, Cassie, we can't take any comments at this point in time, but I think that's a separate discussion that you could have with the assessor's office. So, are, is there any more discussion from the panel?
Yeah, so anybody been out there and drove on the county roads to access it in the last? I haven't, I haven't been out there for ten years.
Yeah, getting there a lot. It's a good county road.
It's a good road.
Recently traveled, yeah, it.
No Tarb's good.
Yeah. Like it goes all the way out and.
Okay, I'm sorry, but we can't take any public comments right now, the period has ended.
But you'll see on the map, the Peter Springs Road, it's, it's traveled a lot.
Yeah.
You can actually take it all the way through and come out on, what is that, four ninety one?
Mm-hmm, it goes all the way. But I think their access point would be Tarb.
And it's a, it's a, I forget the county designation for the road, but it's a good road going north to the project, so.
Okay, so before we have a call to vote, I'll read off the possible conditions, or the conditions. Um, I did need original signatures from all the property owners. Um, I, you filed some paperwork with me, Dale, but there was a few signatures we still needed to get in person, so we'll figure that out. Um, prior to construction, the applicant will receive a building permit. The applicant shall apply for and receive a San Juan County business license, um, associated with this conditional use um, permit being granted. The construction and operation of the solar project can co- shall comply with the International Fire Code and San Juan County Fire Policy and subject to inspections. The solar project shall be operating compliance with, do we want to add state and federal regulations at this point? Um, the life of the project and final reclamation plan shall be signed as an agreement with the property owners. Um, this permit shall be null and void if the solar project is abandoned for over ninety days. Um, after abandon, abandonment, the solar panels and all infrastructure shall be removed at owner's expense. Um, any neighbor adjacent owner reasonably expected to be at or near the facility during construction, maintenance, or other activity that has potential of harm shall be informed. Um, the facility shall be kept clean and free from rubbish, flammable waste material, and other noxious or nuisance substances. We have also added that surface water issues need to be addressed and appropriate drainage permits are obtained. We need to ensure decommission bond is in place prior to construction and renewed every five years.
Do we have a motion?
Look, one more item for discussion, isn't there typically like a sunset for a conditional use permit, like if somebody comes in and gets a conditional use permit, but then does not start construction for?
So it's a year? And this might take them more than one year, but to maintain that vestiture, they just have to show that they have not abandoned the project, that they're taking steps forward.
Okay. So if they don't start breaking ground until twenty-seven, I think is what he's setting here, they don't necessarily have to come back in here and redo this exercise.
Correct, so as long as they show that they are still working on it and they can prove evidence of that, they are still vested in this conditional use.
Okay. All right, Lloyd, that's the last little bit of discussion I had.
No, you're good. Do we have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the conditional use for solar project we just discussed.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
With all of the conditions, yeah.
Any other discussion? Very none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Oh, abstain?
Abstain, sorry.
So, I just had a question, un- kinda unrelated, but this company is E G Orion. Dale Harris, does that, I saw that uh the company is based out of Plano, Texas, is that correct?
Miami.
No, Miami is the headquarters.
Oh, really?
Global Inc. is the parent company, E G Orion will be the, the project company.
Okay. So where, who, who's out of Plano, Texas?
I'm out of Plano, Texas.
Okay, that's where I graduated high school.
I, actually, I live in Denton, Texas, where'd uh, where'd you go to high school?
And that's where I went to university, so.
All right, Anne, I'll give you Dell's number later, okay?
Couldn't resist it, so unique, so anyway. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Oh, hold on, back it up, Questar. Like it was a quick one, so it's little in here. Man, I wish our little hotline would work right now.
Yeah, Questar Gas doing business at M Bridge.
We'll get to you here. And here we are, okay. All right, our next one is a consideration approval for a conditional use permit for Questar Gas, it's a regulator station project. Um, with Kevin Mulvey, who I believe is, is he here online?
No, I'm online.
Yep, um, so in February, we received a request for this uh, uh conditional use permit to develop a gas regulator station. Um, it's only a one acre parcel, it's currently zoned as ag, and let me show you where this guy is at. So there's already a, a, I, I'm not sure exactly what it is, it's a, a pipeline substation there, and they would be uh parcelling off the, the neighboring property to move some of this equipment and upgrade it and um just kind of be able to expand a little bit on the current equipment that's there. So if we look at um, the map that he provided here, so here's that new parcel that would come in, that's one acre. And there's that little sliver of the existing, so if you, you know, go back and forth, our parcel fabrics off, but um, you can kind of see that this is expanding, expanding it, but um, Kevin, I'll turn the time over to you to explain a little bit more about your uh, the pump station and that.
Sounds good, I appreciate that. Um, actually Blake Haslam is on the line, he's a, he's the engineer on this project, but let me just tell you, um, yeah, we currently uh share a facility with with Williams or Northwest Pipeline, and we just need to create that, the separation on that, maybe Blake can explain that and then tell you exactly what we're, we're doing it with the new site. So um Blake is with us, I'll let, uh, I'll let you address that, Blake.
Yeah, so cu- so currently we have some older equipment inside of William's yard, we need to upgrade that equipment, so to do that, we also wanna move it out of their site so we can access it easier for maintenance purposes. So we are gonna do all new equipment in the site that we just purchased to the south, as you showed. The things that'll be included there is, uh, like you said, it's a regulator station, and then also the equipment we're upgrading is odor and equipment for the city of Monticello, is what it feeds, so.
This one's even further out there, so it's right there.
So is the second paragraph incorrect in here? It's talking about it being solar.
Probably a typo. It is not solar, it is gas. And it is not renewable energy, it is energy.
But, but could the facility be run on solar?
No, sorry, that's just a typo. So I don't know, uh, Kevin, do you wanna, or your engineers speak to a little more of the specifics of the site layout here?
Yeah, I can, I can talk about it, so it's gonna be a seventy by seventy foot yard, uh. The perimeter will be chain link fence, and then inside we'll have uh a nine foot tall building that houses all of our regulator equipment and odorant equipment. And then also we have a heater just on the outside of that. Uh, we already had Rocky Mountain Power put a pole from the current site down to our site, and then yeah, pretty much for security purposes, it'll be, you know, like three s- three strands of barbed wire on top of the chain link fence, and then the building will be locked, and then also everything inside there will also be locked, so. It's kind of the high overview of the equipment.
These are drawings TC would understand.
So this is gonna look like just the rest of the stations that are out there for this?
What's your conditions?
So the conditions for this guy. Prior to construction, they'll receive a building permit, the applicant will uh upon granting this conditional use will receive and maintain a county business license. Same Z's operation of the facility was, will comply with International Fire Code and San Juan Ca- County Fire Policy and subject to inspections. It will operate in compliance with state and federal regulations. The facility shall ensure a secure site to keep public at safe length from operations, any neighbor adjacent property owner reasonably affected um, will be, with a potential of harm shall be informed, and the facility shall be kept clean and free from rubbish.
Hey Blake, are you having to build a new comms tower or anything like that up there?
Uh, no, we're gonna have, we're just gonna have remote access like an R T U.
What's that mean in English?
Everything can be accessed remotely, so if a system goes down, they can actually see it over in Denver or wherever, and they can get it back online. Um, a lot of, a lot of things have gone to that level of automation where they don't need any boots on the ground to restart things or change pressures or flows or
Yeah, I, I should mention, this is an unmanned site too, will only be there maybe two or three times a year just for maintenance purposes.
Any other questions?
I move that we approve a conditional use permit for Quester Gas to develop a gas regulator station, subject to the conditions.
Okay, go to motion.
I'll second that.
And a second. To approve a con- conditional use permit for Questar Gas and a regulator station on West Summit Road. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Number seven.
Thanks for being so patient. What? Don't touch my mouse. All right, consideration approval of the project plan and development agreement with Valley Estate Subdivision under Spanish Valley Overnight Accommodations Overlay Zone. Um, this process was started with uh She Khan and has shifted to Dana Farmer. Um, the project is vested in transitioning, in that transition. Um, so I wanna start with a little bit of the history on this one if we can, so in October of twenty-three um, planning commission uh held a public hearing to rezone it and then got that approval in November. Um, the county commission also approved that rezone, and then they applied in December for the overnight accommodations overlay. So they applied for the residential flex zone and then got the overlay. So um, you'll notice in this proposal, it is a, a more of a mixed use, I don't mean that as in multiple use, it is a mixed use development um consisting of both residential long term and short term. Um, it's collectively forty-five and a half acres, um, and I will let Dana take it from there.
Uh, do you, do you have a, the, the engineering?
Yes. So here's, here's the previous minutes if anybody needs to reference them. There's chapter ten, you're the only one to complete chapter ten so far, good job.
Well, it's, we're working on that right now.
Okay, here we go.
So, so one, so as Kristen said, this was rezoned as residential flex. And then there's the um overnight overlay that were, that were both approved. And so what we've done is we're coming in under um the two thousand nineteen Spanish Valley Ordinance with a community structure plan and a development agreement. And then that would move forward to what's called, to, to where we would get to actual plating, so what you see in front of you is conceptual, so, so in looking at this, at this we're not here to say this is a plat that we're asking you to approve. This is, this is, this is, this fits in with what the ordinance requires as a community structure plan, so to show roads and planning and things like that, to be able to get an idea of the plan for what we're gonna be doing out there, and to be able to see how what we're planning fits within the property. And so one of the things that we're asking for within the development agreement is a maximum of a hundred and ninety-two units, and what you see there is a hundred and ninety-two units on the property. The other thing that's required under this section of the ordinance is that we have twenty-five percent open space. And so the open space, um, the roads don't count as open space, but all of the green stuff that you see there is open space as well as common area within the community, and so the units would be the individ- individual types of buildings that are depicted there. And then common space is everything that's around that, and so this is to give you, to be able to show that, that we're coming in within the structure of the ordinance and planning a community that's going to fit within that. And then once the, the, once the community structure plan and the development agreement are completed and signed with the county, so you would have to do a recommendation for approval on those, then we go to the the um, there'll be legal review on that, and then we go in front of the county commission for final approval, because it is legislative, that's where at this point of the agenda. Then what we do is we come back, and this, this, this is, this will be a phase development, we're not gonna build it all immediately at once. So we would come back and we would plat the phases, and we would bring in plats, and at that point, there's, that, that gives you specific structure that is going to be in there. Now that being said, if you look up there at the top, there was already some construction that got started out there. So if you kind of look at the top, you sort of see in the middle that dark green, that, that park. So if you look really close, there's a line that kind of goes through there, and then it comes over and goes by those red houses, and then kind of goes up between the red houses. That's essentially where roads have already been cut and some improvements got put in before we were engaged to come in and help to consult on that. So because those roads are in, then what you see up there, like the, basically the whole, that whole top left, if if you just kind of drew a line up from the bottom through there, that's, that structure's pretty darn close to what it's gonna have to be, because well, especially from the roads, because that stuff's there, you've got some sewer in there, you got um, uh, stub ends to lots and things like that, so, so that's pretty close. And, and there could be some variability down below, you'll notice we've got a road going out to the west to be, to go over towards Sitla, we've got a road going to the east to be able to move into where Balance Rock's gonna be, we've got another road coming out to the west where Balance Rock is, and then there was um uh, the homeowner whose name I can't remember, Mrs. Taylor, I think is what it was, she talked earlier, so we've got um, if, so if you, if you look at that top rectangle so phase one and then probably what would be phase two sort of over where all those, that open area is depicted, there's that farthest road to the west of the top, excuse me, east. The land that Mrs. Taylor was referring to is to the, just to the east of that, and so they've got easements, those folks over there. And so they've got frontage on that street, so that's part of how we're trying, we're, we're, we're mindful of that, and that's how we're trying to be able to address them. And then, and then the way that we'll specifically do that will be depicted in a plat when we get over to that part of the property. So that's, does that help the members of the commission sort of understand what you're looking at here? Do you have any questions about that?
My understanding is that property owner Thomas uh was re- was uh going to move forward with asking for a zone change for her property, but if it's current, what, what is her property currently?
I think it's res, I think it's under chapter one, it's, I think that's called Spanish Valley Residential, which is what this property was before it was rezoned last year.
Well, until she rezones that property, there is a buffer requirement for your zone being next to residential, that, I don't know how you mitigate that at this stage with things happening kind of out of order. But according to the residential flex, there's gotta be a hundred foot buffer from a residential zone.
Okay, well, we can take a look at that and address it. I, I would.
Well, I mean, uh, ma- maybe, let me read it, so maybe I'm misreading it, but let me just read it out loud so everybody can see what I'm looking at, the development standards, page twenty-six of the residential flex um, says that no non-residential uses within the RF zone shall be permitted with a hundred foot of an adjacent residential district boundary. Um, now, you, this planned unit is supposed to be residential, but it's got the overnight accommodation overlay, so to me, that's where we get into that conversation of now we might have commercial uses there. And that just, you know, trying to see if we're following our ordinances. Is anybody else following?
What do you mean by commercial uses? The nightly rentals, he's, he's been previously uh vested in, in that approval.
Then does there have to be a hundred foot buffer between that and property, and property that's in the residential?
No, uh, an overnight rental is considered a residential unit, it's built to a residential building code. It is not, it is not a commercial space, it has to have a business license, but things like accessibility standards, they don't have to have, it's, it's a, it's a house, and it's treated like a house.
The county's view of that is that it's residential under the residential building code, not under a commercial.
Yep, they're built, they're built to a residential code.
Code that we had somewhere read to us, yeah. Yes, resident.
And so they would uphold all of those standards.
Under the I R C.
So they're considered a residential use, so then that buffer problem is not applicable to them.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then the other one would be the height. There is a maximum height.
Of thirty-five feet currently.
Right, is, so y'all are aware of that? Right, is, so y'all are aware of that? Um, and then my only other question about it was uh the development agreement?
Yeah.
Who wrote that? Who wrote the development agreement?
I did.
Dana used to be an attorney. I'll rat him out.
In a, in a prior life.
And is that typically how this is going to work? Since this is our first one, he's gotten to this stage.
Mm-hmm. So they'll sign a development agreement with the county. And that, that ensures, hey, you're saying you're going to put in all this infrastructure, the roads, the, the lines. And um, you know, we'll work through that on our end. Um, s- they have in the past bonded for that infrastructure. So let's say, this isn't going to happen, don't worry. Let's say they get started and then halfway through the project, they run out of money and the company goes kaputts. Then we have that bond to finish the infrastructure. Um, so, but that's, that's kind of a Mac and our attorney's sort of sort of signature, not necessarily planning commission.
Yeah.
And I have. I need to add to it too. Um, we actually have had TNT and Steve Howard that have uh finished chapter ten process. So this isn't the first one. Um, the.
It's the first one I've seen.
Oh.
Go ahead.
The will, the will serve letter that was given to them by the service district has daylighted out. Um, that is no longer a usable document. And also the engineered plans that went to the state have timed out also. So we need to make sure that we.
For this project?
For this project, yes. The, the state has a deadline on their, when you submit your engineered plans for water and sewer, there, there is a deadline for completion on it. Especially when you have lines sitting in the ground with, that's without water and chlorinated. The pipe becomes brittle in the um overchlorinated areas. So these are some things we need to look at to, through the service district. Um, and I know you need, in planning zoning, you do need to see the will serve letter for this
Mm-hmm.
to continue.
Yeah, so I've contacted the service district twice and asked for the process to get a will serve letter. And so far I've been told that there's not a process to get a will serve letter. As far as the other stuff goes, we recognize that that, where we are on, on those things and that stuff will get addressed. But at the stage that we're at right now is coming in here to be able to get through this approval process so that we can pick up where it is and be able to um move it forward from there. So, so I, I, I'm, we're cognizant of the concerns that are being addressed and we'll definitely address them um at the appropriate point. And if there is a process to get a will serve letter, then I, I, I would real, I would like to get, I would like to know exactly what that is so that we can get it. Because I've asked for that or for how to ask for that.
So who can ask?
What's that?
Who have you asked?
Um, I'm going to look it up on my phone. It was, I was given the name of a woman and she, she, let me get it here.
She's the one that issued the original will serve.
Okay.
Uh-huh. So there is a process. I actually manage that service district.
Okay.
So Lloyd, maybe you could help get some applications and some paperwork sent our way so we can coordinate this.
Yeah, it's just a request for the will serve and then um the board will approve the will serve.
Okay. I call it four, three, five, four, five, nine, four, one, two, one. Someone named Dawn.
Yep. Yep, that's her.
Okay. So, so do I do that through her?
Yes.
Okay, and she knows to give me something that I'm supposed to fill out to ask for?
Yes. Yep.
I will, I will let her know that we've had this conversation. I appreciate that.
Yep.
So Lloyd, your, your belief is that we can't move forward without a will serve?
Well, it's, it's hard to approve um through planning zoning. And I, and I think this is part of our requirements with the, the county's planning zoning is that there is um the available water for a subdivision of this size.
Yeah.
And I, I'm not saying that there isn't at this point, but I think it is a requirement of the planning zoning in San Juan County to have that will serve letter.
And.
Am I correct, Kristen?
I don't know. This is my first rodeo.
That's, that's been our expectation and that's why we've been trying to find out how to do that.
Yeah, we figured, I, I figured Sheek's was still valid from where he left off with his plans. But if we need to do that, we can get it on the list.
Yeah, and we just make sure we get everything resubmitted through the state again.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because they're the hard ones.
Why don't you get a will serve and come back to us?
Yeah.
Can we finish going through this so that if there is anything else that comes up, we can take care of it at once?
Yeah, there's. Yeah, I don't know, Lloyd. Do you have anything else?
No, that, that's all I have. And I just, I, and I want to be, if Jans or Matt, uh Mitch are there, I, I need to be corrected at this point if I'm wrong on that.
We'll look into it. We'll look into Sheek's, what he has and go from there.
I, I honestly don't know if it's a requirement at this stage. I don't know why it couldn't be listed as something to, to be brought in. In other words, you can essentially approve and then you, you bring it in. But I, to be honest, I'm not fresh on that requirement at this stage.
Okay.
Not very helpful, sorry.
Um, at, at what stage do we talk about development standards?
So under the code, the development standards are in what's referred to as the project plan, which comes after the development agreement. And that can, um, I'm trying to remember the page number. It's in chapter two, um, down around twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. And that, the project plan can be a plat for a phase or things like that, according to the ordinance.
Thank you.
I, I have a question. So, so can you only put four units on an acre? I mean, that, I, I saw that somewhere.
No, you can put four units on an acre on how it was originally zoned. But we're coming through a process here through the development agreement. So if, let's, let me back up. Did you kind of give you some context? Okay? So if the property had remained Spanish Valley Residential, then you had a quarter acre lot minimum. And you could do a single-family dwelling or a duplex on about half the property. And so what we're doing is we're coming in and we're saying in order to get, and if, and so if you did that on this property, that would put you right in the range of about a hundred and eighty units. If you, if you maxed out your duplexes and, and single-family. So what we've done is we've come in, but the, but what you don't have there is the open space requirements and things like that. So we're committing property to open space and, and so forth. And then coming in with the development agreement. And so under the development agreement, instead of having those specific side yards and setbacks and all those things that you see in chapter one of the ordinance, those could be provided for in the um, in the development agreement. And so this can, this structure plan shows what it would look like if we came in with an agreement that's structured the way our agreement's structured and how units would be in here. And so instead of having duplexes, we've got some duplexes, some triplexes, some fourplexes and things like that. And so um, so you've got more units on less land than you'd have under chapter one. But then you've also got open space. And what we're trying to do is create a mix of units that applies to different income levels to try and create as much diversity as possible within the project to be able to attract various buyers and stuff like that.
I thought I heard you say it was twenty-five percent open space. I couldn't have heard that. That doesn't look like twenty-five percent.
Well, if you only look at the green, you're right. But if you look at everything around the buildings, that's all going to be common area. So that's considered to be open space as well. So the open space is sort of like not owner-owned or managed space.
Okay, so, so it's only owner-owned within the, within the building?
The unit, yeah.
So somebody could actually put pitch a tent in front of my unit?
No, no. They're not, they wouldn't be allowed to do that on the open space. So the open space is going to be controlled by like CCNRs and things like that. So no, it's, it's, no, it's a, it's a, it's, you can't have someone come and do that because that would be a violation of the open space limit or like the common, common area limitations within what's, what you have in the, in the, in the community.
I was going to say, this isn't like, you know, most of what we see is just a parcel with a house or a building. This would fall under the plan, plan development where it plays by different rules than just a one-off parcel and owner.
Hey, Kristen, real quick, you gotta, you gotta remind me. So we did a zone change on this, correct?
So I wasn't, when you say you gotta remind me, I wasn't here for a lot of it.
Overlay.
So we, we did not do a zone change. This is still in the planned community?
The one that we, you, you guys voted this zone changed.
So under Sheek, and this was before my time here, there was a zone change to residential flex and then the overlay was applied the next meeting after that.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that means that the only development agreement is step three of chapter ten, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're on, they're on the final step.
Okay, okay. So we, we've done the application for attaching overnight accommodation overlay to a specific site.
Right.
Property in development. So Sheek got through the first two steps, correct?
Correct. So on, on that little table, ten point one, we are on the final stage.
Okay, so we're, we're at the end one, which um this is um staff and/or planning commission approval according to specific terms and, and ordinance obligations, which this, this means that this is the final step, does not go before the commissioners. This is the last stand.
Yes, but the development agreement would be signed directly with the county. Like the development agreement is not on planning commission. That is to be signed with the county, AKA our legal team and MAC.
Okay, so when, when we're talking about development, that's why this is the worst chapter in the world. When we're talking about development, um, you're almost talking about planned community, which is chapter two.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And so when, when we start looking at this, you've got, you've got the knowledge of your commissioners on what part of planning zoning. Um, where, when you start going through chapter ten on all the requirements within the overlay, you tell me which one of our three commissioners knows what has to be in this for this development agreement? That's why I don't understand why the commissioners, you know, because I, I read the chapters or the, the table differently, that we are the ones that agree to the development agreement, not the commissioners.
Under chapter two?
Under chapter ten.
We are in chapter ten because you are no longer in chapter two. You are, you are now doing the overlay. So that means that chapter two is out the window. We're looking at chapter ten and the final step of chapter ten is I read on the third, third part of that table, this doesn't go to the commissioners. This, this ends right here with us.
No, that's correct, but when it says staff, it is saying MAC is signing that development agreement.
Staff and/or planning commission approval according to the specific, the specific terms and ordinance obligations. So staff, I mean, you could call staff, Kristen, you could call staff MAC. I mean, it's by interpretation, correct?
The planning commission does not bind the county in the contract, so Lloyd, don't worry about it.
Did you get that, Lloyd?
No, I didn't.
John said the, the planning commission is not the binding party for a legal contract. So what we are discussing, what we're discussing right now, Lloyd, what we're discussing right now is that you give this development your good graces for them to move forward with that legal binding development agreement that our attorneys will be reviewing and that our administration will be signing. You know, Trent does not sign development agreements.
Okay, so.
No, I hate this chapter two. Dana knows that.
Well, and I understand that, but so, so according to um our attorneys, what's the landscape standards? Um, I mean, what's our irrigation systems? What is our uh curtains supposed to be according to chapter ten? I mean, it, that, this is something that if we're, if we're going to look at this as planning zoning, it, it's not, you know, the, these are requirements. And so now, now planning zoning is completely out of the picture of the, of chapter ten. So yes, we can approve it as chapter ten, but we have zero say in enforcing what is within chapter ten.
Lloyd, I think what's going to happen is the planning commission, which has this knowledge that you're talking about, will help the legal team and the commissioners, MAC, with the decision. You know, you'll be involved. I, I think maybe you're looking at it as, once you're done with this step, you have no more say or involvement, which I don't think is going to be accurate. We'll need your input.
Which, I, I mean, you know that I hate chapter ten, one hundred percent. I think it's the stupidest thing we've ever done.
That's why we're trying to get rid of them, get something better.
But at the same time, I mean, it's, I, I guess it's how you interpret the chapter ten and, and its definitions.
Yeah.
Because it puts us, because the way it was explained to us originally from um multiple administrators and attorneys through the county is we are the final say on chapter ten. And now I'm being told that we are no longer.
That's what you're doing right now, is you're saying, does it meet these things? That's what you're, that's what you're recommending tonight is yes, it looks good to chapter ten. We are relying on you. We're not, we're not.
But they're giving us a concept map.
No.
We don't have any details here to look at.
I mean, have you looked further down? I mean, they have.
In the development.
They have a drainage plan there. Well, not a drainage plan, but a topography plan. Um, they've got their utility plan. So if you go further into the packet, I think you'll find there's more information.
Okay, so then as I read it, we, we do nothing on this, on this step. I don't even think this should be before us because we, we're on step three right now. And, and the, the final part of that is administrative. And it's staff and/or planning commission. Well, if it's not us that's doing this development agreement, then it shouldn't be before us right now.
Have they provided bicycle facilities? That's what you're looking at.
No, what I'm looking at is, is so are you on this page right now that you can look at it word for word with me?
Sure, I have it in front of me. What page are you on?
Okay, so we are on, what is it? The third page of chapter ten. So it, it's the last line of table ten-one.
No, I see it. It says development agreement, project plan and/or subdivision plat.
Yes. And then you go to the far right, it's administrative, okay? Um, is staff or planning commission approving this? It's the way I read it. And it sounds like the development agreement is what we're looking at at this point. And if we're not approving the development agreement right now, then we shouldn't even have this in front of us.
So Lloyd, I am reading it as staff and planning commission to include you. And so we would like your feedback on this development. So what feedback do you have?
See, and I just don't think it should be before us then. I really don't.
So you would say staff should have just made a decision on this?
Yep, one hundred percent. We've made it to this point. I don't think, we're not, we're not involved in the development agreement. We shouldn't be involved in saying yes or no on this one. If we are not involved through the beginning to the end of the development agreement, why would we vote yes?
Okay, I am fine for you guys to vote to just send this to staff and staff will deal with it internally.
Because why would we put our name on something that we did not go through as a development agreement?
It's included in your packet here. Is there anything in the development agreement that you are concerned about?
Are we, are we going to recommend this to admin?
It sounds like you're not going to do anything. You're just going to send it back to staff and that's fine. Or if you would like to recommend it or deny it or hold or, that's fine. But I think you're getting into the weeds and we need to focus on the fact that there is a development in front of us. There is a development agreement in front of us. And if you have any comments or concerns about said development- Comments or concerns about said development or development agreement, they need to be heard at this point in time.
So the applicant said at the very beginning of his presentation that he's not asking. For approval of this plat.
It's not a plat.
It's.
It's a community structure plan. We don't get to plat until we get, until after the development agreement is signed. This is just.
Isn't that the kind of thing that Lloyd, that we as a planning commission should see is the final? Details?
We're not there yet though. He's, that's what the development agreement would do. Is move it to the next step where they are actually subdividing this property and plating each lot.
So the original design of the water and sewer does not exist anymore? Because you couldn't have a design on the water and sewer system that's already in place without a plat being. Approved.
You just told me that they're gonna have to redo all that anyways.
It's all underground. They just have to reissue it with the state of Utah, the original plans that was submitted. So that, that means that the plat that we don't have. Means that the water and sewer that's already in the ground doesn't exist.
They may, I mean Dana and I talked about this very early on where they may have to add in extra stubs or move stubs. That is on the, on the radar, but until the development agreement is. Legal.
What a mess.
So yeah, they, they might have to add in some different things to make each lot work because. It was stubbed in on a different plan than this. It is a mess, but Dana's willing to fix it.
So then, so then, hold on.
Cody, we almost made it. Lloyd's killing me here.
You're fine, dry it up.
I'm with you Lloyd, I just, I just don't know. Somebody, a higher power needs to tell me what to do. Either we just approve this step, move it to staff, or just kick it to staff. Or.
So, so is our number? Is our number of rooms and units the same as they were the last time we seen it in here with Sheek?
I don't think so. This is a whole new.
So our design and development conditions are different at this point also. That means that step two needs to be redone.
Yeah, this needs to start over. This is a whole new application.
So step one is correct. The rezone, that's been done. That was approved. Step two, that we say that's already been done, was approved. Step two was approved on the assumption that we already had a plat. We already had a design and idea. And now we're stepping back and changing that and moving to step three without going back through step two. Because if we're changing every, and I'm not saying everything, but a substantial amount of this. How can we move on to step three when chapter, when step two of chapter ten is been redesigned?
We, we can't design. A plat of a phase until we have a signed development agreement. Because our plat has to comply with the development agreement and the terms of the development agreement. So the development agreement essentially becomes the zone. That we have to comply with.
So, so you're telling me, you're telling me that originally when this came in the first time from Sheek on. That the plat that came in with him. Can't exist?
Well, I, I don't know what you did with Sheek. I, I know, I know what happened is the work got started and then it got rezoned. I'm not sure why work got started. And then it got rezoned, but it's been rezoned. And so in order to be able to get to where we can design. And where we can comply with design. We have to go through the process that we're going through right now and we have to have a signed development agreement. And then we have to design to the requirements in that agreement.
So work, work did not start until he had came in the second time on this.
Which step do you want us to take? You, you always have a conceptual before you have this final product.
I agree.
And your conceptual is what you base your. Development agreement on. It's not like, once you do one thing, it's fixed and you can't make a single.
No, I, I totally agree. I don't, I don't even.
I mean, if I didn't know we were having this.
No, I would just like to approve the conceptual agreement that we have and move that to staff. To where it can be developed and platted at that. That's the motion I would like to make. And you can legally ease it to death, whatever it needs to say, but that's the motion I'd like to make. That we approve. The conceptual concept, cons.
Concept?
Concept. It's not a community structure plan.
Well, if you look. Back at the minute, at the packet from when Sheekon originally submitted this. He only, which we had. Based our votes on the overnight accommodations overlay on at the time. There was only one phase. It was just the top left corner. There was much fewer units.
Yes.
Um, so it's almost like a bait and switch. Like we made the, we, we made decisions based on. Information at that time and now somehow. That information has just been traded out for these new. Documents that. We have only gotten to look at for the, you know, for the first time now. Um, so this definitely feels messy. This definitely feels like. We are going off of. Pre- previous information.
The next step to move forward from there to where we are today. So this whole parcel was, this whole area was approved.
No, not the whole, so.
No, the whole property was approved.
The whole property was approved, but we only had.
So the point, the point is if, if it's all approved for this.
Zone.
Type of improvement.
Overlay.
Just because, in my opinion, just because you saw only a portion of it initially, doesn't mean that the rest. Doesn't also have the same, you know, opportunities and rights. It's not like you can say, well, in, in my opinion, what you saw originally that had just a portion. Uh, means that all the rest is not, you know, is, is denied the same.
Assuming that Sheek still had this and we were going along the original plan, he was, he got approval for this first phase. What would, what would he have to do to do the next phase? Would that, would that bypass the planning commission altogether?
The first phase was platted under chapter one, quarter acre lots, single family dwellings. It was never, it never came into this process. I don't, I don't, I don't, I can, I can tell you from my perspective, I, I appreciate your confusion. Because I'm confused too. Why, why you come in and you plat and you engineer. Based upon a zone that you don't want. And then after you start, you come in and you rezone to a zone that you want. And, but, but you've already started construction. Based upon a zone that you just zoned out of. So what we're trying to do is take it where it was left with the zoning and come in and pick up what's there. And move the process forward as close as we can to the requirements of the code.
So, so when Sheek gave us his stuff, it proposed a hundred and eighty units. That's what he had.
Yeah, that's in the notes, yeah.
Yep. So, so here's, here's my recommendation to this board. Is we, we were, we were submitted a subdivision. And that's what we improved. With the steps that we, we had got to, we'd got to the second step on this. Um, and that was under the assumption, it was under the subdivision that we approved as planning commission. If. If the county disagrees with us at this point, I think we should just kick it back to administration and let them handle it. Because I don't think the proper steps have been taken at this point because we've, we've moved back one. And so if the county disagrees with us on that, I think we just need to kick it back to. The county and let them make the final decision on it, like step three says to do anyway.
Lloyd, I don't think that we can un-invest it. Is, is.
Yes, we can. If the subdivision plat comes in differently than it did originally. That they are not vested in the, the second step of chapter ten. That it's no different than the Wells project out here on the highway. Um, comes in the second time after we'd already started the process without a highway access. And then we start backpedaling on that one, saying, okay, now the first one that came into us. Had a highway access. Now this one doesn't. What are we gonna do about that? It's that same thing. It's that same. You come in with this concept, we agree with it, we, we approve it. The second time it comes in, we've got, we no longer have a highway access to, uh, you know, ninety four units and it's on a single road. Going, you know, it just. To have a concept idea, to approve a concept is wrong. Planning zoning is to approve subdivisions. We, we approved a subdivision that was brought into us. We did a zone change for the subdivision. We approved the subdivision. With what was presented to us, we get through chapter two and now chap, we're on, or not chapter two, but we get through the second step of chapter ten. Now we're going for the third step and final step of chapter ten. And it's a completely different idea than was, was proposed to us in the beginning. So in my mind is if, if, if our. Um, administration and our attorneys for the county think that we need to continue on because they're vested. We need to kick it back to them to make the final decision. Because this is not what we approved.
Aren't we talking about two completely different ordinances here?
Well, no, because we're in chapter ten right now, right?
This ordinance, Lloyd, requires a different set of steps than the other ordinance you talked about, doesn't it?
No, no, because we are.
You're saying the Wells ordinance, the Wells property is under the same ordinance as this project?
Yes, chapter ten. Yep, absolutely.
I don't know, that was all before my time.
Overlay. It is. No, it was chapter ten overlay and that's what Curtis Wells came in for, for that piece of property on the highway.
You know Melissa, when you had that just piece of what Sheek had proposed.
Yeah.
And you look at what is before us now.
It's different.
How different?
Well.
But all the zoning and the overlay was done. And he came to us to have the overlay when Balance Rock came in, like, cause we'd done Balance Rock. We did this, then Balance Rock, and then he's like, oh, well here, this, this plan is coming together. So that's why he came in and we did the overlay.
I can see it, but I'm looking at, I mean, I look at that and I look at this and I go.
Yeah, he, he just went, they took what he's. So conceptually, I think it's fine. Let's, let's. If we wanna make adjustments to the plat that was approved on phase one, since it's all still commonly owned. We can make amendments to that plat. So I think the idea that somehow you have to start over when there wasn't an approval of the entire property. Is incorrect because we can, we can go through with what we've got here. If we wanted to change the lot lines to make those consistent with the way that we're putting together this plan. Since, since we, since we own all of that property, we have common ownership. Then we can come in through an administrative process, present it to the county commission and they can approve the amended plat. So I don't think that it's a complete start over.
Man, I just think it's so similar. I, that corner is all we have of Sheek's.
Yeah.
And they took that corner and.
We're not gonna change the roads.
Very similar and then they added on to it.
But there aren't gonna be changes on roads. Cause you've already got fire hydrants in there. We're not gonna rip all that stuff out.
But, but just as an example, just, um, to the left of the road. That, the new one has, let me see, that's twelve units versus five on Sheek's.
Yeah.
Right?
I mean, under planned unit development to do that higher density housing. I mean, I think. At the heart of this, I will say I like this development. It brings in lower cost housing. And when we're all about, we need affordable housing, affordable housing. But then you're gonna shoot down one person who's trying to do affordable housing.
That's not what this is about. It's about following our process and our ordinances.
But I.
It's not about whether or not we like this development or not. It's, it's about.
I feel like they took what was left off to them. I mean, you look at Melissa's, here, here, sorry, you can't see it. I mean. That's about what it still looks like. Yes, higher den- density, of course, but.
And I don't, I don't understand how you can say that what Sheek brought in was going through chapter ten. Because there wasn't a development agreement in place. And so what, what it was, was it was a plat. That was just, it took a portion of the property, carved it up into essentially quarter acre lots, put single family dwellings on it. That's it. That was chapter one. This isn't chapter one anymore. I don't know why he did it like that. It seems like it's inconsistent with all the zoning that, that, the zoning that was going on after that, which was to come into a plan development and to be able to present something like this. I just have to make the comment. Over the last couple of months is this is one of the reasons why we need new ordinances. The people in the community can find fault with everything we do. But to sit here and try to legally. Be appropriate and do your job to the best of your ability with the ordinances that we have in place. Is beyond difficult. And so I know that's off top. I just have to make it that. That's why we need to start somewhere. Start twenty twenty five. Have a, we are going to review this ninety days before twenty six. How has, how, what things need to be fixed? What things were wrong? What? But we need to start somewhere. We can't just continue to push it down the road and let people that. That aren't daily in the process. Keep us from. Finding a way to have better ordinances, better communication. I mean, he's an attorney. And he can't get through this damn process how it anybody else. I just, I just think it's unbelievable. I, I look at it, I just shake my head that. Like we want less government, simple, this, that. We do, but we have to at least. I promise you, the new ordinances for the most part were that. There's my speech for the night that I shouldn't make, but.
Good job, Cody. Trent, can I make a motion? Yeah.
There's a whole bunch of motion on the table. So we need to make sure we're following that procedure.
And I still would go with that motion that.
We approve the conceptual, conceptual.
Yes, sir.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Just for clarification, what was the motion? That we approve the conceptual design that's before us, so we can go to the.
Development agreement.
Development agreement with staff and attorneys, the developer, and they can come back with a platted. The next step.
But they're, they're not coming back to us though, right?
Nope.
So Cody, just to be clear, you are asking us to approve the development agreement?
No, we're asking them, we're, we're going to allow them to move forward. With a development agreement based on this conceptual. Concept and the documents that are before us. This is, we'll do their best to follow these. But it's out of our hands, basically, just like Lloyd said. It's gonna go to staff. It's gonna go to the attorney's administrator.
On our agenda, it says consideration and approval of project plan and development agreement.
He is redoing that statement. You, his motion is to approve the conceptual plan. So that it can move forward.
Okay, so he's trying to change. So he's motioning that we're gonna change the. Change it from what's on our agenda.
Yes, that was my recommendation.
Okay.
Can I make a secondary motion? Not yet. I would like to motion. Yet.
Can I still ask a question?
Yeah.
Are you waiting for a second?
Ask your question.
So, so we haven't talked about, um, short term rental with regard to this. And I opposed this originally because I didn't think the overlay was appropriate here. Can you tell us about, you know, you've got a hundred and ninety two units here. All of them are gonna be. Available for short term rental? That's the plan?
That's, that, that's, but there's the potential to that because the ordinance allows that.
Yeah.
But I think that, that we're, we're, we have to build to the market to see what the market is. But, but.
But, but I think that that's, that, that becomes a question, since it's zoned for that on an owner-by-owner basis. I mean, it's, so from, so, so let's say that, um, you know, that some of these are bought by people who wanna run them completely as an Airbnb, and some of them are bought by people who wanna live in them, and have them as their primary residence. And then, they give it to their kids, and their kids wanna put it into something like that. I can't answer exactly what's gonna happen with that, I can just tell you, I mean, the zone is what the zone is.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I was, as I said, I was...
So, I guess the answer to the question is, does that, does that potential exist? Yeah, it does.
Yeah, so all hundred ninety-two could be, yeah.
Well, then one night, so just, just so you understand, the one ninety-two would be a maximum?
Yeah.
If, 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 if market, if the things that sell result in there being a hundred and sixty, or a hundred and seventy, or something like that, it could be different, but...
No, no, I understand that, yeah.
Okay. Uh, do I have a second to Cody's motion? Okay, hearing now...
Yeah, I don't understand the point of Cody's motion, if, if it's not binding, it's not, it, it feels so unofficial, it feels... If we're just approving a concept, that's not really a step in this project.
Okay.
In the procedures.
Motion fails for a second. Anybody else wanna throw a motion?
I would love to motion. I would, I would motion that we kick this back to our commissioners to make this decision on this, because...
And what is the decision?
The decision is the development agreement. We're out of it at this point, because we are considering this step three, we cannot go back to step two, because they're vested. So, at step three, we do not have the final say in it. We are kicking it, a- and if you, if you follow the three steps in this process of chapter ten, it's either, or, the way it reads is a, an administration or planning zoning and/or, and so, according to our attorneys, the only ones that can do a, um, development agreement is our commissioners. So, the way I look at it is it needs to go to our commissioners. I think we need to kick it to them and, and us not have a say in this whatsoever on this one.
And bypass staff?
Yep.
Recommend the agreement?
To the county commission? Lloyd, did you hear that from Jen? Do you recommend the agreement to county commission, or you're just saying we are...
I am not recommending, I am not recommending it or not recommending it, I am just saying that they should make the decision on this one. Because I do not agree with the process that we're doing according to what chapter ten says, and I completely agree with Cody, that if we would have had our new ordinance in place, we would not be in this position right now.
Well...
Because if, if we make this decision right now, and other attorneys within the county disagree with the way that it's interpreted, and the way that we handled it within planning zoning, it's another lawsuit.
I, I just don't think it's fair for the commission to have it either.
So, who gets it, Trent?
This is a hot potato.
Well, it does say staff, right?
Don't you, don't you?
So, Kristen?
We, I would feel confident in taking this and working this through our administration and our legal team. I, I, I professionally feel that it is at that point where our staff, whatever that team is comprised of, needs to take this on, review the development agreement for those contractual terms that we're looking for, and, and take the responsibility for coordinating this project down the road.
Can we ask Mac for his opinion? I think he's good with that. What? Are you okay with that?
I didn't hear what's...
We're to development agreement, are you okay to just take it on as staff?
Well, I think there's just a lot of confusion going back and forth and looking at the ordinance. Um, I think, and I don't know, but I'm spoken sorry here.
No, it's fine, go ahead.
Just coming out of the blue, but, um, one possibility is just table it.
Yeah.
And then, let us review it as staff, and go through and, and make sure. I know that with Balance Rock Resort, we had a different process, and so, gotta go back through and look at, kinda like Lloyd had mentioned, chapter ten is crazy, um, but let us get it right. I think, I've already just sent it to the commission, um, when it's, kind of the planning commission's responsibility for that, and so, that's just my input, and so...
Okay. I have a motion.
Well, a second point's motion, I understand his motion and, and, uh, and I don't disagree with his motion, it's, it's a lot to do with what we talked about and our, our ordinances.
So, his motion is to send it to county commission, that's what's on the table right now. Lloyd, did you redo your motion?
I, I agree with Mac, I would, i- if I may, withdraw my motion and motion to table it until we get further, um, further educated by our county attorneys and our county administration and our planning zoning administrator.
I'll second that.
Because I, I think at this point, I am not educated enough to make a decision on this without being wrong.
Well, I think we're wrong.
I'm with you.
But I think this is right. So, I got a motion and a second to table this, until we get further mansplaining.
Oh, no mansplaining, no mansplaining.
Okay, further educated.
All those in favor? I'm sorry, guys, I just, I, I just, I'm not comfortable with the way it reads.
No, just, just for the record, our preference is that if, that it's, is to make sure that you take the time to get, I, I can appreciate everything you've been through in the last year with your code. We've spent a lot of time looking at the code, and, and I would rather have this commission advise legally from your counsel so that you're comfortable with your process.
Thank you.
So, I'm, so, so the, just, just from, just from our perspective, and, you know, it's like anything else, we wanna get going as quickly as we can.
Sure.
But we also want, we don't wanna, the, the cart already got ahead of the horse once, so...
Right.
It's always ahead of the fast.
It's okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
One opposed that took a half hour.
Oh, shit. How about building permits?
There they are for February, thanks, Dan.
I have a, I have a concern, I understand that if you live within the town of Bluff now, you can no longer get a building permit, is that accurate?
Correct, so we do not have a in-house building inspector in the county, so our cutoff was January, well, February second. And we will, the county has a duty to fulfill those, um, who have paid for permit to follow the life of that project. Um, but you need to understand that our, our fees have greatly increased, and the county is just eating that cost at this point in time. And so, um, Monticello City and Bluff City have decided to part with us, and they are doing their own thing.
Well, my, my understanding is, you decided to part with Bluff without giving Bluff...
That's not true, and I think you need to talk to Ann a little bit.
Okay. Well, but at the same time, right now, there's, if I wanted to build a home in Bluff, or I wanted to build a business in Bluff, I could not get a building permit.
Not from the county, you'd have to go through Bluff, and we can talk about it later, but that's Bluff City's issue, but let's talk after this meeting. Um, but yeah, the county's in a bit of a pickle with that. Um, I have asked several times to correct that, and it is going to your county commissioners on Tuesday for a, another proposal to resolve the building inspector conundrum, because we are in trouble fast. Any other questions, or let's get out of here?
I have a re- I have a request.
Okay, go ahead.
I think, I think we need to get educated about the development agreements in general, um, about what we are, what, what they are specifying legally.
Sure, they're, they're definitely beyond the scope of the planning commission. The, the development agreements is a legal binding document signed with the county, it's, it's outside of our scope.
Juxtaposed against a conceptual plan is confusing, like, you know, are they, are we supposed to look at those as two separate things, or are we looking at those documents side by side? Like, here's what the applicant's planning, you know, to do with their plat map, and then here's the legal ease of the agreement. I, I would like to understand that better, because I, I think this is gonna happen again, and if we don't, if we're not clear on what it is we're supposed to be, you know, understanding in the development agreement as it relates to the rest of the project as, as submitted, then...
I think a flow chart would help.
Or get rid of development agreement.
Or get rid of chapter ten.
Well, I thought the development agreement was to the county's benefit, because it helps protect the county from, you know, a, a, a developer that doesn't, um, follow through.
That's just development requirements is what that should be.
Okay. We'll look into it.
But yeah, just another topic so that we, when we see this again...
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Time is it, it's not ten o'clock yet.
I got a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
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 No.